Former Councilmember Neoma Jordan, lead us in the pledge.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
Thank you. We're moving into A2 roll call. Councilmember Breckus.
I'm here.
Dewar.
Here.
Martinez.
Here.
Ebert, absent at this time. Taylor. Reese. Shivi, absent at this time. Vice Mayor Reese, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. We're going to start off, as we enter into public comment, I'll let you read the disclosure statement, but we've got two special presentations at the top. So do you want to read the disclosure?
No, we'll read the disclosure right before we have speakers.
Fantastic. Well, let's start off with Cody, our mayor for the day. Cody is here with us, and you'll see Cody is an eight-year-old beautiful, beautiful mayor for the day. He's here today with his person, Vicky Taylor, and Cody volunteers throughout our community about 300 hours per month. Oh, per year. Per year. Still a lot. Working dog, a very hard-working dog. Every week at St. Mary's and a few times per month at the airport. Most of his visits are with Paws for Love. He visits the district attorney's office, 911 dispatch, two libraries, crisis response in schools. I think Encompass Academy is one of the locations. And so we're very honored to have Cody in chambers with us today and his person, Vicky. So give a welcome to this beautiful, beautiful mayor. Hello. Hi, friend. Hi. Okay. And of course, with Paws for Love, if you're collecting the cards, they've got some of them here, so get yours while they're hot off the presses.
Thank you, Cody.
Okay, our next proclamation is a special one for me and for many members of the dais, and we're going to present a proclamation honoring Shipa Zed today, who sadly passed away in 2022. And we're honoring Shipa today for her commitment and kindness in the community. My colleague, Councilmember Dewar, is coming down. Shipa's husband, Rajan, who many of you will know is the president of the Universal Society of Hinduism, is in Nepal today, and I know that getting communication with him the last couple of days has been challenging, but we were able to do so. I'm going to ask Shipa's daughter, Paul Kenzad, and Skylar Woolman, who was like a son to Shipa, to come to the podium with Councilmember Dewar. I thank you, of course, both of you for being here, and we're honored to offer this proclamation in your mother's honor.
Yeah, and before I begin, I'll just say that, you know, I've had a very pretty long relationship with Rajan Zed and his wife Shipa, and it was very heartbreaking to be at the service for Shipa. She means so much to our community and the good works and the good deeds that she's done. I mean, her radiance has spread. Her cooking is legendary. Her love of people, animals, and all things has really touched a lot of people. So I'm very pleased to read this proclamation today. Whereas on March 9th, 2022, our community lost a selfless soul who touched many hearts in our region and around the world in the 57 countries she visited, spreading goodwill. And whereas Shipa Zed of Reno was an enthusiastic volunteer and an accomplished chef who specialized in Indian cooking and who supported a wide variety of causes and frequently fed the unhoused in our community. Ship is fondly remembered by many of her past students at Truckee Meadows Community College and was committed to innovation and quality. The Shipa Zed Scholarship Fund is being established to help her students achieve their goals. And whereas selflessness was the goal of Shipa Zed's life, in all of her undertaking, she kept the welfare of others in mind. She was authentic, charming, compassionate, contented, forgiving, friendly, generous, trustworthy, and extremely warm. Now, therefore, I, Naomi Dewar, on behalf of the mayor, Shivi, of the city of Reno, do hereby declare November 8, 2023, as Shipa Zed Day. I'm so pleased to present this to you. Okay. Did you want to say a few words?
Sure.
Sure. Okay, come on up.
First of all, thank you, Vice Mayor Reese and Naomi, for that really kind gesture and this proclamation, you know, to showcase the impact my mom has had on the community. My mom is driving, you know, it's such a bright sunny day today, so I was driving today and I was thinking, my mom is as kind as the sun, you know, and just like the sun, she shared her warmth and her kindness with everybody without discrimination. And as, as you mentioned, you know, one of her big passions is education. She loved to help people with their personal development and their education. She did that by offering food, housing, school supplies. And so, as you mentioned, we've developed a scholarship fund in her honor, where we want to help others pursue whatever pursuit they have in education, whether it's academic or athletic or artistic or otherwise. So thank you for recognizing her kindness, and we hope to continue to spread that within the community.
And you're doing it too. I mean, with your profession. Do you want to just mention?
I want to make this about mom. She's amazing, and, you know, and it's still quite hard, so.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you so much for both of you for being here today.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Reese. So at this time, we're going to open item A3, Public Comment. Members of the public may hear, observe, and provide public comment virtually by registering through the following link, which can be found at reno.gov/meetings, It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the mayor and council as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the council's agenda. Council may not take action upon any matter not agendized on today's agenda. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you state your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. For those participating in chambers, in accordance with Council Rules 6.3.11, while in this room, please be respectful. Disruptive behavior from audience members like clapping, yelling, whistling, et cetera, which impede the meeting, may result in a warning issued by the presiding officer. If the behavior continues, you may be removed from chambers. If you're an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. And just for the record, I would like to note that Mayor Shivi has arrived virtually at 10:14.
And Madam Clerk, make sure the record reflects that Ms. Ebert is with us as well.
Okay, our first public commenter today is Barry Levinson, followed by Terry Brooks, followed by Dr. Jafeth Sanchez.
Good morning. Honorable Mayor Shivi and distinguished council members. My name is Barry Levinson, a volunteer with Sierra Club Great Basin Group. I am also a retired chemical engineer and physician and have been living in Reno since 2020. Of all the big issues in the world, my gravest concern is that of climate change, which, as we know, is primarily due to the burning of fossil fuels. I fear that in the coming few decades, we will be living in an environment and climate that is very different and much less pleasant than that to which we have been accustomed. I joined the Sierra Club to try to make a difference on this front. As we all know, Reno and Las Vegas are two of the fastest-warming cities in America. I feel that it is therefore incumbent upon all of us in Reno, Washoe County, and the state of Nevada to institute policies that move us expeditiously toward a greener economy powered by clean renewable energy. Today, I would like to talk about one small area ripe for change, that of gas-powered landscape equipment. Gas-powered leaf blowers and other similar equipment run on two-stroke engines. These engines are cheap, powerful, and extremely dirty and noisy. According to the EPA, emissions from landscape equipment reach 30 million tons of CO2 in the U.S., which is more than the entire city of Los Angeles. They are extremely inefficient, spewing as much as 30% of their hydrocarbon fuel as unburned aerosols. These aerosols are extremely toxic, containing small amounts of benzene, toluene, xylene, and sometimes lead, all of which are toxic to human health, especially causing cancers. I always cringe when I'm in proximity to these leaf blowers, both for my own health but especially for the health of the landscapers who are exposed for hours upon hours each day. This equipment also creates a large amount of volatile organic compounds, nitrogen oxides, and particulate matter, which are major components of smog. According to the California Air Resources Board, operating a commercial gas-powered leaf blower for one hour creates as much smog-forming pollution as driving a passenger car 1,100 miles, amazingly. Smog has been linked to many human health effects, including heart attacks, strokes, asthma, and cancer. The solution to all these problems is a switch to electric-powered equipment. A study by Turf Magazine estimates that the electric equipment is more expensive initially but saves money over the long run. They estimate a break-even point of two to three years. This may be a small price to pay to prevent the toxic health effects of their gas-powered equipment. Many municipalities have banned gas-powered equipment, including DC, Miami Beach, and Evanston, Illinois. California has banned them starting next year. I would like to encourage some discussion on this topic by the Reno City Council so that we can begin to find ways to transition away from gas and toward electric-powered landscape equipment. Some paths forward could include funding from the Nevada Clean Energy Fund or the IRA. Thank you very much for your time.
Dr. Levinson, thank you for the presentation.
Our next public commenter is Victoria Taylor, on behalf of Cody, city of Reno mayor for the day, followed by Terry Brooks, followed by Dr. Jafeth Sanchez.
Victoria, welcome. We wanted to give you the opportunity to speak to the group if you desired to do so. I know that Cody was up here on the dais, but if you wanted to share anything about your work with Cody or the Paws with Loves folks, we'd be sure to have, welcome you.
I think that you said most everything that he does. He's a very hard-working dog, very sweet, just like all of our dogs in our program.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the opportunity. We're sorry that we missed Hillary.
No worries. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Our next public commenter is Terry Brooks, followed by Dr. Jafeth Sanchez, followed by Donna Clontz.
Welcome, Mr. Brooks. Good morning.
Good morning. It's me, Terry Brooks again. And today, I'd like to engage in the topic of discrimination when it comes to health and age. Because elderly people find themselves less likely to be employed, they might have less access to health insurance because of being unemployed. And if they don't regularly work, they'll get less physical exercise. And without good physical and mental health, they put themselves in compromise. If the elderly are not employed and spend more time at home, they might waste time just sitting there and writing poem after poem, like me. And if they're not very active and don't work up an appetite, then they won't eat very much and won't sleep very well at night. And spending less time around other people because they have no profession could cause them to lead themselves into a state of depression. And when so many elderly people develop more disabilities doing so, then they can lead to losing their previous abilities. Not having very much action eventually leads to even less action, and the act goes on and on, developing a chain reaction. The older a lot of people get, the more time they spend by themselves, and by doing so, then they're less likely to be able to take care of themselves. And the older you get, the more it leads to poor physical health, and that can then lead to a state of poor mental health. There are a lot of people who see the elderly as of no use, while a lot of elderly people can't defend themselves from physical abuse. Some refuse, some refuse to help the elderly. They refuse to understand that the elderly don't just need help, but they also deserve a helping hand. No matter how old you are, you have a right to live, but there are those who discriminate while others are willing to give. I would like to thank you all for listening to me today, and I hope that I'll be able to have even more to say. Thank you.
Dr. Jafeth Sanchez, followed by Donna Clontz, followed by Neoma Jordan.
Dr. Sanchez, welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor Shivi and esteemed council members. I'm Jafeth Sanchez, the Director of the Latino Research Center at our University of Nevada-Reno. I'm here to thank you for your support for our Dia de los Muertos event, which was held October 15 to conclude our Hispanic Heritage Month celebrations. And this was with gratitude to the Reno Arts and Culture Commission. We're super excited for this city of Reno's support. I brought a team with me also today. I always like to introduce you all to new peeps on our campus. I have Oswaldo Jimenez here. He is the recently selected Director of Latinx Hispanic Community Relations. And then I have Patty Guerrero, who is our Latino Research Center Coordinator for Research, Education, and Outreach. Who I don't have with me but send their regards is Janet Nahara. She oversees undocumented, supporting undocumented students on our campus. And Maggie Guttero, who is the new coordinator for Latinx opportunities on our campus under the Multicultural Center. A couple of things. We had a record-breaking turnout for our event, which was super exciting to see. And in that record-breaking turnout, about a third of our attendees shared that they were new to the event. And 60% of the attendees identified as being a member of the community, which is incredible because that's part of the intention, bringing more community members into the campus, which oftentimes is their first time to have ever attended our campus. And of those, 80% shared that they were of Latino-Hispanic descent, but there was representation from every diversity cultural community, so we were excited to see that. When they indicated what their favorite part was about the event, the highest-ranking aspects were the cultural artistic representation and then the dance and musical performances. So we're really excited to be able to continue that endeavor. We did submit another request for the current thing, so it's currently pending on whether it will be awarded, but we thank you all and especially the City of Reno Arts and Culture Commission. So thank you.
Dr. Sanchez, welcome. Thank you so much. And Oswaldo and Patty, welcome as well.
Thanks.
Donna Clontz, followed by Neoma Jordan.
Good morning, council. My name's Donna Clontz. I've been spending most of my life working as a volunteer here in our community, for our senior community. Today, I'm here to talk about and support and urge the council to adopt the Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan that's on your D1 agenda today. I've attended quite a few meetings about our parks over the years, and in particular, Paradise Park has become one of our age-friendly activities. Parks and open space is one of the areas that the world folks that work on making their communities more age-friendly, it's one of the things they focus on. It's one of the things that makes us healthier, that lets us age well in our communities. So our parks, our open spaces are important to staying healthy. Mental health, physical health, and all kinds of ways to make us happier, to be in our great outdoors here in Reno, Washoe County. So I know you're going to be spending a lot more time with staff when you get to the D1 agenda, but I wanted to especially support the part of the plan that talks about funding. We have had many great ideas and have not been able to implement them over the years because we haven't been able to fund our parks and our park staff very well since the Great Recession. And that's covered in the materials you have today. There are a couple of ideas, though, that are in the plan. One of them is creating Recreation and Park District that is allowed under our state laws, that allow a special district to be able to be created that could raise funding to be able to do ongoing fundraising for parks. That is an idea that has worked in many, many communities, but it does depend on putting money into its coffers once it's created. The other thing that could be done also could be running some kind of a publicly-supported, either bond measure or tax measure. I know that many of us are averse to those kinds of things, but we have, as the public, agreed to tax ourselves when it's something really important for us. We have implemented money specifically for children's services, for seniors, for animals in our community that come as an every-year piece of our taxing. And I think parks is one of those things that could be looked at very seriously that way. I think that there is public sentiment, as it says in the materials. The Reimagine Reno activity that we went through several years ago picked up the support of, it was the highest-supported idea that our community had, to have beautiful open spaces and to support them. So you have that on paper support in the community for the parks and to be able to fund them and staff them better so that we can be proud of them instead of having to worry about how we're going to do it going forward. So thank you for your time. I really appreciate all the work that went into this from the community and from the Stand Tech company. Thanks very much.
Ms. Clontz, thank you for your comments and advocacy on behalf of seniors and our parks. I hope you'll join us. Councilmember Ebert is hosting a luncheon around Thanksgiving next week, I think on the 14th for seniors. I hope you'll be here for that.
Neoma Jordan, followed by Craig Bronson, followed by Bill Shrimp.
Thank you very much. Madam Mayor, virtually, Mr. Vice Mayor, good to see you, councilmembers, and City Manager Thornley. So great to be here on this side of the dais this morning. Great to see you all. I am here today all cooled off and fired up, here to give you some information about the Downtown Reno Partnership, of which I am the executive director, tell you some of the great things that are going on, which I know many of you are aware of because you have either attended an event, you have shadowed an ambassador, and you understand the great work that they do every day. I have given to the clerk our annual report, which can give you a snapshot of the accomplishments in the last year and some of the missions for the forthcoming year. And I wanted to just walk through a couple of things. First and foremost, Madam Clerk, I'll put down on the... You'll adjust that for me? Thank you. First, I did want to just thank all of you again. I know Councilwoman Ebert has come and shadowed an ambassador. I know that they appreciate that very much. I know it hopefully gave you a lot of information about the work that they do every day. Councilmember Martinez, I know you did that as well. All of you, with some exceptions, have attended an event, and I appreciate that. It means a lot to the organization and to the revitalization of downtown. For those who aren't familiar, the Downtown Reno Partnership is a business improvement district. It runs from I-80 to the north, California to the south, Wells Avenue to the east, and Keystone Avenue to the west. And it encompasses 1,500 property owners and 110-block area. We have 29 ambassadors that work virtually 24/7 to help keep Downtown Reno safe, clean, and vibrant. And on the overhead, this is just a quick snapshot to show you just during the month of October, some of the ambassador stats to show you the volume of work that they're doing and the accomplishments, the services they're providing in downtown. What stands out to me on this is over 130 shopping carts recovered. They have recovered over and disposed of over 9,000 pounds of trash in one month. Over 1,000 service referrals, and the ambassador's Tish, who's on the photo on the overhead, is out there doing it with a smile, engaging with residents and visitors, and doing the work that's difficult during the cold and during the heat, and it's very much appreciated. So that's some of the stats we have for that month. The other here is some of the great events we had. We had an incredible roller skating event. I know Madam Mayor attended that and had a great time. Below is the Downtown Tuesdays events. Which were well-attended and took an underutilized blighted space and converted it into a community event space, which we had great turnout. Free music, food trucks. It was tremendous. We're launching some Luncheon Learns, which will be neighborhood-specific, and they will focus on interest areas within the neighborhoods and really drill down on that. I am here today before you to give an update. Every month, we will have a board member that will come and give this update. We know your time is valuable, so we won't take more than three minutes of it, but we're here to do that for you. And again, I just want to thank you all for the hard work that you do. You don't always get kudos and appreciation. And I will close in saying thank you to the staff. You don't always get the appreciation for the good professional work that you do. You are experts, and you are appreciated. Thank you.
Councilmember Jordan, I wanted to also mention my condolences for the loss of one of your ambassador team. I know that David Papelio passed away this summer and just hadn't seen you since then, so I want to just extend my condolences to you and the team.
Means a lot. Thank you.
Craig Bronson, followed by Bill Shrimp, followed by Mark Newman.
Good morning, honorable mayor, members of city council, city staff. I wanted to say hello to our mayor for the day. First time I've talked to a dog, but they had to leave to do other things. So anyway, it's very nice that you are allowed to do that. So my name's Craig Bronson. I'm one of your appointed Recreation and Park Commissioners. And as a 50-year park recreation professional who can't ever retire, even when I come back and volunteer, I wanted to speak on item D1, and I appreciate the opportunity to do that early in the meeting. I have another conflict. I'm on the HOA board in Sierra Canyon, and I get to do those fun things too, so I've got to run to that. But I just was hoping city council would support the Park Recreation Open Space Master Plan. In my experience, there's never a master plan that's perfect. And many times, we spend a lot of time continuing to tweak and tweak and tweak and work on master plans, and you kind of lose the interest and never get it approved. So I'm hoping today the council will give the authorization to approve the master plan, to move it forward. It should be a living document, something that over time will continue to change and with additions that are necessary. I hope the one thing we don't do is to put it on a shelf. A lot of master plans get approved, and then they sit on a shelf and gather dust. And then 20 years later, you want to go back and have to spend money to do it again. So number one, I hope you can approve the plan. Number two, support staff for all the great work that they're doing, which it means provide the funding to implement the plan. And I realize you have a lot of conflicting interests, but parks and recreation, as you can tell from me, is a passion. I really believe in it. And third, I hope you'll challenge your Recreation Park Commission, we have a number of commissioners who are here today, to be advocates and support staff and do everything necessary because I think as commissioners, we can play an important role also getting this master plan implemented, getting public support, doing those types of things. So again, thank you for appointing me to the commission. We love what we're doing. I hope you can approve the plan, and we look forward to moving forward. Thank you.
Mr. Bronson, thank you for being here. And if you wouldn't mind, just meet with my staff afterwards so we can get on calendar to spend some time talking about your experience and this fantastic plan.
Great. Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Bill Shrimp, followed by Mark Newman, followed by Alan Bima.
Good morning, everybody. I always start by saying thank you for being here, and a lot of times I go pretty quick with it. I'm going to go a little longer with it this morning. Really legitimately, thank you for being here. There's a lot going on right now. So from Madam Clerk, all of my elected officials, Mr. Manager, Mr. Attorney, most importantly, staff. You guys do a good job. A lot of you disagree with each other a lot of times. I disagree with you a lot of times, but I think you care about Reno and doing the right thing. So thank you for doing the work, taking the time, putting the effort and energy into it. So thank you for doing that. One thing that came up in the workshop, was a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, was attendance and some public engagement opportunities. And one of the things that might be a very quick, simple, easy way to increase some engagement, particularly kind of like at the NAV or smaller levels, is, most of you may be familiar with the yellow or blue or sometimes pink notification cards property owners receive. What you may not know is a lot of times people who rent or people who lease a space don't receive those cards. So pretty simple and easy to send those to people who rent or lease. And perhaps if they're more aware, maybe they'll be more likely to attend. It seems like a very simple and relatively inexpensive way to perhaps increase engagement. Run it for six months, do a test, see if it works. If not, it's real easy to turn off, too. So that's it. Thank you again for being here, everybody who does the work, especially you folks over here, the staff. Have a good meeting, and spend good energy so far. Please keep running with that good, positive energy today. Have a good day.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes, Madam.
I know we don't usually comment, but this has been an ongoing issue for me for many years, the point that some 50% of our residents don't get notice of our actions, whether it's planning actions and any kind of actions. And so I didn't coordinate with Mr. Shrimp, but I've asked staff to take a closer look at this. I got to do a shout-out to Callie Woolsey, who worked really hard to get the redistricting information out to all the residents, no matter whether...
out to all the residents, no matter whether they're owners or renters. And it was very challenging because there is not a natural database for this. So, it's going to take some, some additional work by the city, but I think the end goal is a good goal. I really do.
Great comment.
Mark Newman, followed by Alan J. Bima, followed by Jay Howard.
Mr. Newman, welcome. Good morning, distinguished commissioners and staff. For the record, my name is Mark Newman. I'm a Washoe County resident, Reno resident for a long time. I've lived here since 62. Graduated Reno High in class of 79, 100th graduating class of Reno High. 26 years ago, bought a house at the north end of Sun Valley in Lifestyle Homes, became involved with the community in Sun Valley. I'm on this elected official, and both of you were in the class with me, for the Sun Valley General Improvement District. I sit on the Sun Valley Citizens Advisory Board. I'm on the Washoe County Senior Services Citizens Advisory Board for District 3. I'm also on the Open Space and Regional Parks Commissioner. So, I get around a little bit throughout the county. So, but here today, and first thing is, is the Sun Valley General Improvement District, while the pool is open during the summertime, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, from 11:00 to noon, is open to all seniors of Washoe County and anywhere else for free swimming for one hour, two days a week. We decided to do something for our seniors out there in our community. That's open to all seniors. And number two is, as you guys are all going through with your stuff on the parks, and I see it as well, everything has gone up except for the money. And the Sun Valley General Improvement District, a number of years ago, initiated a special use tax. And every Sun Valley resident of the GID pays an extra $3.50 a month, and that is dedicated strictly just to the parks of Sun Valley. And I invite all of you to go out and take a look at the parks in Sun Valley and the swimming pool facility, and you can see that it, I know everybody didn't want to do it, but it went through, everybody passed it within the Sun Valley. It's a special use thing that was put on the ballot. You might think about that when you're looking at funding for your parks. You might not have to charge as much because you have a lot more residents, but you also have a lot more parks. Thank you for your time, everybody. Have a great day.
Thanks for your service, Mark.
Sorry, Alan J. Bima, followed by Jay Howard.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. My name is Alan J. Bima. I'm 84 years old. I hold down two full-time jobs, and now I have a third job, which I don't really need. And that third job is becoming an unpaid janitor for homeless people who apparently like to hold a picnic in the back of my current address. I'm very upset with this, and I don't need it. I would like to get some contact information for the city attorney, so I can at least submit a, an invoice for the time I have to spend. The worst part about it is, is a large part of the trash that I have to pick up is things like squares of tinfoil that apparently are being used for the fentanyl users, and those are very dangerous to my health. I don't need it. I know how to stop it. I can talk to the city, to the city attorney about ending fentanyl use here. It's simple enough. I'm a professional systems analyst, so I know what I'm talking about. My methods tend to be a little extreme. I, like I said, I would like to talk to people and, and get something off so I can get off of becoming an unpaid janitor. Thank you very much.
Jay Howard.
Good morning to the council, and thanks for the time. In order to speak, my name is Jay Howard, and I am with the Truckee Meadows Parks Foundation, and my major program with them is Truckee Meadows Trails, so TMT. And just real quick, I also represent 26 or 27 different entities on a working group, to include local governments, our federal land partners, and just the trails community for this Truckee Meadows Trails Program, which is a nonprofit cross-jurisdictional, regional effort at improving our trail system connectivity and providing planning and support for trails. This morning, I wanted to come up early and speak on the, the Agenda Item D1 in support of PROS, or the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. I, I too support all of those planning efforts that have been, been, been put in place. The draft plan looks fantastic. I, I love the way it makes reference and supports trails in our community and in the Truckee Meadows on, on city properties. Obviously, planning is very important, and we don't get really too far down the road with, you know, getting those projects and improvements in place that we need without really good planning. So, I would just voice support for the plan. I really appreciate the, the way it supports trails and makes reference to the Truckee Meadows Trails Program, and would ask for your support as well with, with PROS. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Reese, with that, we have no additional public comment. We do not have any commenters registered on Zoom. For the record, I would like to state that we did receive nine comments, which were general in nature and not directly associated with an agenda item prior to 4:00 PM yesterday, November 7, 2023. These comments were voicemail and/or written correspondence received via our Reno.gov online public comment form, or by email to our office. Copies of these have been distributed to the Reno City Council and are available on, available to the public on Reno.gov/meetings. Zero comments in favor, zero comments in opposition, and nine comments of concern. With that, we're closing out general public comment and moving on to Item A4, Approval of the Agenda.
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Manager. I think you have some changes to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Just two relatively minor things. We need to withdraw Item G4, Gulf 4, which is appointments to the RAC and Parks Commission. We're not quite ready to do that. We'll have it on for next week on the 15th. And then, I'd very much appreciate a time certain of 1:00 this afternoon for Item D1, Delta 1, the PROS Plan. We need that to accommodate our consultant on the matter and make sure that everyone who wants to be heard is, is able to be here for that.
Okay. With those two changes, can I get a motion, please?
Sure. Move to approve the agenda?
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Doer, second by Mr. Martinez. Any additional questions at this time? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to Item A5, Approval of the October 11, 2023 Minutes.
Unless there are changes, can I get a motion? I have a motion by Ms. Taylor, second by Mr. Martinez. Any additional questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda items, and just for your information, Mr. Reese, we do have a public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sorry, you were ready before I was. Our first public commenter is Gary Overholt, followed by Nancy Litchfield.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. This is Gary Overholt. I'm talking today about Agenda Item B7, the Moya Extension to the Reno Business Park. I'm not anti-growth, but I'm responsible growth, and I'm definitely pro-safety. Right now, we have a lot of truck traffic in the North Valleys, as you well know, due to the expansion of high-rise, high-density houses and everything like that. However, with this expansion into the Reno Stead Business Park, we're going to see more truck traffic. The roads are getting beat up, mainly due to just the constant 24/7 traffic. As you well know, what used to be a 15 to 25-minute commute is now, can take anywhere from an hour to an hour and a half, especially if there's any incident on 395. So, we are just literally gridlocked with all kinds of traffic issues up there. Plus, as you well know, 395 is going under construction from McCarran to Golden Valley. It starts Monday. So, this is going to add to this gridlock. And if there was ever a what-if scenario of a mass evacuation, I don't see how we can get out. I mean, north to Red Rock, or, you know, once it, I see it weekly, if not daily, where it jams up North Virginia, all the side streets trying to get over to Sun Valley, and everything else. So, like I say, the mostly responsible growth and the fact that we need to watch out for the public safety, especially the traffic and everybody, you know, we have a bus terminal out there for school buses. All the schools are right on the, right, you know, right on Golden Valley and Stead and everything. A lot of kids, and with those heavy trucks and big trucks going up and down there constantly, they're hard to see sometimes. So, I'm just, let's just make sure we do things in the right manner and not just go headstrong without taking care of the streets, taking care of the public. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Nancy Litchfield.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Mayor, virtually, and members of the council for giving me the opportunity to make a public comment this morning. My name is Nancy Litchfield. I'm a Reno resident, living in Ward 2, and I came today to speak as a climate advocate who, like so many others in the community, is gravely concerned about the mounting risks we face from the looming threat of a climate crisis. I'm a volunteer with Citizens Climate Lobby and Citizens Climate Education, advocating for an effective, efficient, and equitable nationwide solution to climate change. We are a nonprofit with over 250,000 members in the US, and we have over 300 subscribing members here in our Reno Sparks Chapter. I want to strongly support Agenda Item B9, to accept a sub-grant award from Environment Solutions Project Recharge Program to acquire an intern who will educate students about geothermal energy, as well as facilitate collaboration among staff, students, and renewable energy professionals. As the impacts of climate change are experienced firsthand by our youth, they're growing increasingly concerned, dispirited, or nihilistic as they learn about the potentially catastrophic consequences of the climate crisis. To prepare them for the challenges they will face when I'm long gone, it's virtually, it's vitally important to educate our kids about the possible solutions and technologies available to help pivot us to clean renewable energy, and Environment Solutions Grant will do just that. I, along with everyone else at CCL Reno, want to especially thank Sustainability Manager Suzanne Groneman for working tirelessly to find ways to cut the city's carbon pollution and manage climate risk, and we appreciate all her hard work that goes in behind the scenes to obtain a grant like this one. We also want to thank Reno City Council for your sustained hard work to protect our community and keep it such a desirable place to live. In 2019, you adopted, I don't know if this is...
It'll come on. Just give her a second to switch it over. Yep.
Something you're probably all aware of, your Sustainability and Climate Action Plan, which was unanimously approved. It's wonderful that our city has a blueprint for steps we can take to promote a healthy and livable climate. This plan took a ton of work, and again, we thank Suzanne for now tackling the big job of updating this so we can have a sustainable future. So, she's going to update it for the next, the coming five years. Despite all this work, we still have not quite met our carbon emissions targets, and my group is going to want to meet with every one of you, those who we haven't already met with in the past years. Councilwoman Breckus and Councilwoman Doer, we've talked to, and thank you. Devin, Council Vice Mayor Reese, and Councilwoman Ebert for actually endorsing our program that will use federal legislation to push forward all of our efforts here in the city. If we're going to really tackle climate change, we have to do an all-of-the-above approach. Thank you very much for your help and support.
Nancy, you're so right. Thank you so much for your advocacy and for your group for being here consistently.
Vice Mayor Reese, with that, we have no additional public comments. For the record, I would like to state that we did receive two comments that were directly associated with various consent agendas prior to 4:00 PM yesterday, November 7. Those were two letters in favor. They are part of the record and available on Reno.gov.
Okay, let me come to the dais and ask for the members if any member has any items they wish to pull. We'll start with Ward 1, Councilmember Breckus.
Yes, I would like to pull Item B6, B7, and B12.
Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Martinez, any items to be pulled from the agenda?
No, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you.
Okay, I have none. Ms. Doer.
Yep, I have two. Let me just get them. B9 and B14.
Okay. And last but not least, Ms. Ebert.
No, my, my items have been pulled. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Can I get a motion on the remaining items?
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Ms. Doer, second by Ms. Taylor. Any additional questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll start with Item B6, as pulled by Councilmember Breckus. Ms. McGoon, thank you. Welcome. Good morning to your team. Ms. Breckus.
Well, it looks like since I did my review over the weekend, a staff report has been loaded up, so I was hoping for a presentation on what this item is. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, members of the council. My name's Joe Cudre. I'm a senior engineer with the Utility Services Department, and here is the presentation. So, thanks for pulling this. Really excited to talk about this project. So, if we step back, I would just like to say I'm proud to be here today, because this discussion on this approval of design services is about something so much greater than just design services for the flow shave. It's really just a piece of the overall North Valley solution. And we're not in the same place today that we were five years ago, so we're in a different place, and it's, it's a good day. So, with that, how does this align with our strategic plan? It falls under infrastructure, climate change, and environmental sustainability. One thing I need to kind of couch this flow shave discussion in is that it's, as part of the bigger North Valleys discussion, there's a few major components I just want to, to walk through briefly, but as of today, we have expanded the Reno Stead Water Reclamation Facility. Expansion's complete. The facility's functioning very well. We've, in that, as part of that expansion, we updated our process so that we're now really set up to move toward this advanced purified water facility that's been a, a regional discussion for some time now. So, the stage is set for that. We have updated our chlorine to an ultraviolet disinfection, reducing chemical usage. We've got superior filters, which is a, produces a better quality finished water. And this has really set up the water reclamation side for about the next 15 years out. So, that's a spectacular, fantastic project. But it sort of leads to the next, next two points that I need to bring up here as I go through this slide. If we step, step back and look at the North Valleys sewer multi-phase solution, as we know, when you're talking big infrastructure projects, it's not just one small project here or a big project there. It's normally phased approach, and this is really no different. When we look at the North Valleys, we've got three, three, really two big components, and then a sort of an interim component. So, we've got the Rizwharf Expansion. I want to applaud the City Council making the decision some years ago to move forward with that. It was both design, now construction. Like I said, a fantastic project. This product, well, I also want to applaud the council, looking at the American Flat Advanced Purified Water Facility. This has garnered national attention. We got the first-place award from the American Society of Civil Engineers. It's a really forward-thinking regional solution to tough water management issues. In that yellow box, that's kind of our, our solution. It's something that five years ago, we weren't able to talk about that solution like we are today. So, that's fantastic. Now, as any big project comes out... Now, as any big project comes up with challenges, yes, the American Flat Project is moving forward. We're moving towards sixty percent design. Are there timeline challenges? Yes, we're, we're working with state and federal agencies. There's permitting challenges. We're working through them. No showstoppers, but challenges like any big project. So in terms of timing, in order to make this work, what we're able to bring before you today is, is the discussion of flow shave, which is really a small piece in a multi-phase solution for the North Valleys. And what's exciting about the flow shave project is that we're able to leverage the assets that we have already in the ground. All the piping that's required for this flow shave project is already there. What we'd like to do is upsize some pumping to use the assets that are already at our disposition to basically take us from the expansion all the way through the American Flat APWF project. So the benefit of this overall solution, and I'm not just talking about the flow shave, I'm talking about the expansion, the flow shave, and then the American Flat Advanced Purified Water Facility. It takes the pressure off Swan Lake during flooding and wet seasons. It allows for full utilization of the four MGD, or four million gallon a day project at the Reno State Water Reclamation Facility. And in the process of that, process of doing that, we create a water resource, which is also a commodity. The reason I just wanted to point that out is that this is a, this was a big deal. This was a tough thing to get through, but we've really come up with a solution, and council's been very supportive of this whole process. I want to thank you for that. So with that, I just want to explain briefly what the flow shave is. We don't need to get into detail, but I want to point out the green lines represent, so this is the Reno State Water Reclamation Facility. Green lines represent the sewage coming in and the pipes coming into the plant. The flow shave is basically, if you can see this red line here, it's, it's piping, comes in this direction through a pump station, through another holding tank, out through upgraded pumps that we're here to discuss today, and then gets pumped off-site to the existing collection system, which goes to Tom Whorf. So that is the flow shave. The flow shave is in function today, so what's before council this morning is the discussion on upgrading pumps to basically increase the, the capacity of that existing system. And just a little more details on the flow shave. So at the Reno State Water Reclamation Facility, with the callout shown here in the upper portion of the photo, right here, the flow shave will pump, again, sewage through the existing line, where it makes a connection that's already existing to the existing Tom Whorf collection system, and then it'll flow by gravity and through pump stations down to Tom Whorf. So this is a capacity improvement project, but at its heart, it's really a pump upsize project. Yes, there are some ancillary features. We can get into those, but at its heart, we're upsizing pumps. This will allow us to manage the permit challenges at really a very low dollar per gallon cost in terms of water reclamation. What's before council this morning is the approval of an agreement for design services. This does not include construction of improvements. So if council decides to move forward with the design, eventually with the construction, this will get us from the expansion all the way through the APWF by addressing this interim period, and this upgrade or capacity increase for the flow shave will provide another point four million gallons a day of additional capacity. So putting that, to put that in terms of equivalent residential units, you're talking about, about twenty-four hundred equivalent residential units. Depending on growth, we would sort of bracket that at about another five to seven years worth of growth or worth of sewer capacity to be able to, really, if, if we look at it, as the council has laid out the plan for, for growth according to the master plan, we're providing the sewer service to meet the needs for the North Valleys, and this is, this is one phase of this multi-phase approach. Just want to highlight a couple other things that beyond what I've described of getting through to the advanced purified water facility ultimate strategy for the American Flat Project at, maybe, the American Flat Advanced Purified Water Facility project. If council chooses to move forward with this, the flow shave is already helping to mitigate flooding at Swan Lake in wet winters. Increasing the capacity will yet again move the needle a little further, and it'll be, it will help to mitigate additional. And then this flow shave, it already provides operational flexibility, but as an ancillary benefit, it'll increase the operational flexibility quite a bit. This, this project, the design contract that's before the council today is for four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, which is what Ron and Caldwell, we anticipate construction costs will be approximately five million dollars. And if this item is approved, we will come back to council for approval of construction agreement and appro, go, take it out to bid, bring it back to council for approval to move forth construction in approximately fourteen months. That brings me to the end of my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Well, thank you, Mr. Cudre, for your very excellent presentation. It's clear that your passion and intellect has gone into providing the presentations, so I appreciate that very much. It's a complex subject, obviously, especially from an engineering standpoint, but relatively well explained in my opinion about why it's necessary. So thank you for that. We'll start with Ms. Breckus, who pulled the item.
Yeah, thank you, and I do appreciate the presentation. Could we go back to the overhead slide?
Sure.
Yeah, so, and that we're looking at a five and a half dollar prior, five and a half million dollar priority, more or less, in terms of, this is where we want to invest in our sewer resources at this time, knowing the price tag we're estimating for the effluent, which is two hundred million we're working with right now?
Two hundred and twenty million dollars.
Two hundred and twenty million dollars.
For the overall project.
Okay, yeah. And are there ongoing operational issues associated with, is the sludge or something trucked down separately, or does it all go through the same line? What, what's going on down with Tom Whorf?
So how this works currently is, it's just as part of the wastewater reclamation process, there are solids that get pumped through an existing force main, which is the one that I was highlighting right here.
Okay.
So that's in use now. This project will just utilize that same infrastructure, increase pumping capacity and, and just pump more, more volume, but the volume we want to pump is the flow shave. So it's basically picking up the effluent at the headworks and pumping in around the plant.
Okay.
Not taking it through the treatment process and pumping it to Tom Whorf. It's an interim solution to get us to this longer-term.
Okay, you're taking it through headworks. So just, can you confirm to me, because when we had the Swan Lake and all that, we were in a real situation.
Yes.
And we did this as a interim solution to give us some headroom. And unfortunately, it's becoming, not interim, but maybe you could say intermediate, perhaps, because we're looking at this two hundred and twenty million dollar investment that last time I heard was coming on till twenty-eight, correct?
Yes.
And I, I presume, I hope, that there's ten-year forecast for the sewer fund, because I know our, we, I haven't seen those, we haven't had a workshop on it, but, you know, we are operating under the presumption it's something we can afford. But it's an intermediate situation. It's bringing a lot more, it will divert a lot more, allowing, like you said, twenty-four hundred residential equivalents, so more growth in the North Valleys. Okay, so I have, you know, I've characterized it how I understand it. I've been here the whole time, and I think we went from a real pickle, environmental catastrophe potential, to a workaround. And it's been rather ad hoc, in my view, and, and here's my issues, is number one, is if we're going to spend five and a half million dollars on the sewer, sewer fund to facilitate new growth in the North Valleys, I've been saying, why, when are we going to up a septic tank to sewer conversion for a massive area in southwest Reno from Plum Lane up to the ridge that's on septics with some failing? One household was ready to get red-tagged, a sixty-year-old house, for not having a sewer field, another septic field. So priorities, the table of priorities for sewer investment. Haven't had that discussion, but staff brings forward a design consultant. So, you know, I, I'm going to say my piece now, and I'm going to say it again, it's not my priority. My priority is facilitating the needs and infrastructure of existing residents who we've had for long years, not these thirty-four hundred, twenty-four hundred new ERUs. But let's talk about those twenty-four hundred new ERUs.
Ms. Breckus, we'll come back to you on round two.
Thank you very much.
You're, you're very welcome. Let's see who else has comments. Ms. Doer?
Yeah, thank you. Great presentation. I just wanted to ask you, Joe, could you repeat the date that we expect the advanced water, One Truck, One Water Nevada to come online?
Yeah, so mid-two thousand twenty-eight would be constructed, in the ground, operational, permitted, injecting.
Injecting, okay. Because I too, you know, we started this very cautiously, decided to use fifteen percent of our capacity, the five hundred thousand gallons, I think, capacity per day, to send sewage to Trif, Tricky Meadows Regional Plant. My concern is that as the Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe continue to evaluate their water quality standards, and we outgrow the plant there, so, so losing capacity but also needing to do higher-level treatment, and there's not a lot of room to grow that plant, I'm worried about this continued use. And so I have talked to the staff, I talked to Tom Whorf as recently as yesterday, and it sounds like a, a good thing has happened, which is that they, they told me that the ability of the underground to absorb this water in the One Water Nevada is almost double of what they were thinking. Can you speak to that?
So right now, there was a very detailed hydrogeo, hydrogeological study that was done for, to support this project, and it showed that we could basically take two million gallons a day for five years, and that would get into the aquifer at the American Flat Site.
Mm-hmm.
That's a lot of water. Eventually, it needs to be extracted, and the division is that it will be extracted, and it will be, it's potable water at that point, so it'll be used for many resources. It will go into the potable system of the vision for the future.
Right. I asked Tom Whorf how they'd have to treat that water that they'd pull out, and it sounded like they just had to do one treatment train.
Yeah, I believe they just, when it's pulled out, it's, it's groundwater at that point. They do disinfection on groundwater.
That's what they said.
So I don't think this would be any different.
Right, but that's all they had to do, which I was surprised. He said they were putting on a front-end PFOS treatment, just in case, their planning.
Yeah, so as part of the advanced purified water facility, there is a PFOS unit that's a part of the design right now.
Yeah, to make sure.
That's right.
Okay, so anyway, two thousand twenty-eight, and we're here at two thousand twenty-three still, almost to two thousand twenty-four. So you're saying another four years, and is there even any room left in this temporary diversion?
There is some additional capacity, so this is kind of looking to the future. We don't want to get to the point where there is no capacity. We're in the allocation process currently. It's functioning well, but there's a, there's an end to that. There's approximately, I think, another seventeen hundred units that are available through that.
Okay, well, we started at fifteen percent, and now we're going to almost a hundred percent, I guess is where I'm going, I think. Is that correct? Hundred percent?
You're talking about of the flow shave?
Of the five hundred thousand.
Oh, that, yeah. I'm sorry, would you?
How much capacity of the five hundred thousand did we expect?
We're about, we actually do have another slide here. It's, it's a little busy, but I'm happy to share it. I don't want it to be overly.
Okay.
So...
I'm just, I mean, three quarters.
Yeah, if you, if you look at the two-point-five on the left there, and then you can see the portion that was reserved, the little...
I have to agree, I cannot interpret this slide, but, I mean, roughly eighty percent?
This is this little chunk that was approved by council, and we're about, we used about half of that.
Half, okay.
There's a portion that was reserved specifically to reduce the, the effect on Swan Lake.
For Swan Lake. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Doer, I'll come back to you in round two, but let me see if any other colleagues have any questions on this item at this time. Okay, we'll come back to you, Ms. Breckus.
Yeah, and I appreciate what Ms. Doer brought up, because I wasn't going to bring it up, but, you know, Tom Whorf does have concerns there. And the last thing that is wanted, inconsistent with our master plan policies, is that this North Valleys outlying area, where there are growth struggles in the infrastructure and service delivery, gobbles up Tom Whorf capacity, and then we're shut down in the core for infill development. That is a very big concern, particularly if, you know, this One Water becomes a real problem and does go twenty-eight, becomes thirty-eight, or unfeasible for payment, you know, by the sewer fund. And that would be highly problematic. In addition, you said five years for five million MGD, but then you got to pull it out. You're pulling it out, and Tom Whorf's got a lot of water over there in the North Valleys, because they've also got all the Vidler water. And so there are really outstanding questions, and that's why I always held up on expanding it, the investment in the expansion, until you really worked out the water, because that's the bigger issue. We know how to, everyone knows how to enlarge a sewer treatment plant. They don't know how to manage effluent in the dry desert. So that aside, I want to talk about what this period of the flow shave brings up in terms of our other policy goals. And that is, we should all be familiar with the concurrency in the master plan, that we were going to get the other things in place to allow a lot of growth in an area. I think the next item's going to talk about how we're, a little bit, touch how we're short on road network up there, but the most revealing to me in the last year was, I think, a zoning change up on North Hills Boulevard from commercial to apartments. We looked through all the apartment lists, and an aside question was, hey, Parks Department, where are you building a park in the North Valleys? None. No parks are coming online for all that growth, and a lot of that growth is apartments where people don't have their own private backyards. There may be a tot lot there. So here's my suggestion to the council on this one, is this is a time, very much in your face, to say, you know, let's put the pause in here. Let's put the pause in here and look at this area comprehensively. We all were here last week when we had the discussion about neighborhood planning from the consultant expert who came through. Let's get the neighborhood planning up into the North Valleys, work on the concurrency of the other values that we want to provide residents with, namely parks, good, safe streets. Put the pause now, let the market know that's where we're at. We've been more and more generous with those who want to build up there, because we have keep moving our goal line that we set, but now we're in a compounding issue, and it's unfortunate it's coming up on a contract for something, design services. It should be a policy discussion at this body. It hasn't been, but we are not building the community up there with the services and the infrastructure that those folks deserve, and we keep doing it to ourselves with allowing this one component to work out when others are falling behind. It's really unfair to our North Valley residents. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the dais? We'll go to Ms., oh, Ms. Ebert.
Okay, so I have a question about, you know, if we don't do this, what, what will be the impact to the North Valleys if we don't move forward with this?
Well, if we, if we don't do this, we're still moving forward with the APWF project, and at some point, this will come back to council, and there'll be further decisions. But in terms of the allocation list, that will run out of capacity, so what we'd like to do is get ahead of that, utilizing, leveraging all of our existing assets to basically upsize the pumps to extend the life or really the, the capacity of that flow shave until this ultimate, you know, kind of multi-phase solution is in place.
Okay, so do we have enough capacity to meet the needs of all the projects that are currently happening, that have already been approved?
We're projecting, right now, we've got about two more years.
And then we're maxed out?
And we're maxed out.
For stuff that we've already approved?
Well, for, everything has been approved, that's, and is on the allocation list. We'll certainly provide capacity for that. We're talking about another two years of additional new projects being put on the allocation list.
Okay, so we have two years before we're basically out of space if we don't do this?
Approximately.
Okay, so we're kind of forced into this.
Should council decide to take another route and not do this, the APWF project is still coming. This is a way to continue to provide sewer service somewhat seamlessly from the point of view of the user and, and development, to get to that ultimate multi-phase solution.
Okay, so if we don't do this, will this basically just make it so that we can't approve development in the North Valleys, because we won't be able to support it?
I mean, the answer to that, in a nutshell, is yes, unless there's another solution. This is the best solution we've come up with, and it's been working well. So this would be just expanding that, that same solution to a higher, higher capacity.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Doer.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Maybe I could have Trina come up, would you mind? I, I appreciate this chart. I have seen this chart before. I, I, it doesn't really help me. I want to know, of the five hundred thousand gallons that we can divert to Tom Whorf, if we approve this today, how much total percent of that capacity will we fill with sewage?
So today, you have approved point three-five of point five. So you've approved, previously, you've approved three hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day of your five hundred thousand gallons a day.
Okay.
This would add four hundred thousand gallons a day to that. We've just sort of said we will retain that hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day for Swan Lake. However, we've also noted that this new four hundred thousand gallons a day that we're talking about today, we will come back to council and get your approval to open that up. we will come back to council and get your approval to open that up, prior to utilizing any of this additional flow volume.
Okay, would you, so what I've written down is, we would be using, if we prove this today, four hundred thousand of the five hundred thousand.
No.
No.
Five hundred thousand already exists, council has approved three hundred and fifty thousand of that.
Right.
Okay, this would add four hundred thousand capacity, so that would equal nine hundred thousand total. However, we've already reserved a hundred and fifty thousand, and this additional four hundred thousand, we would come to council and request the use of it before we used any of it.
I understand, but, but this is the pumping, but I thought the pipe was the limiting factor of the point five.
The pumps are the limiting factor, not the pipes.
So how much can the pipe carry? Is it like a million?
It's like one point seven million gallons a day.
One point seven million. Okay, I didn't understand that till today. And so what it is, is the pumping capacity, and that's what you're asking, but what you're also saying is you want to build the pumping capacity, but before you use it, you will come back to us. And what I'm also hearing you say is, uh, you, you are concerned like we are about Swan Lake, and I want to make sure that there's capacity, should we need to divert water from Swan Lake out of the basin, that we have the capacity to send it down to the river, and that's what you're saying, yes.
We will be diverting effluent out of the valley, not water out of Swan Lake.
Okay, so
We won't be sending water.
Get at it is, reduce the amount of effluent that we're dumping into Swan Lake.
Exactly.
And send that down, but it's, you know, it's, it's the same net effect.
Correct.
Okay, all right, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I don't think I understood the full thing, how much the pipe could carry, what the pumps could do, but I do now, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. McGoon, would you state your name and title for the record, please?
Trina McGoon, Director of Utility Services, for the record, thank you.
Thank you.
And just for Madam Clerk's benefit, when there are two people up there, it's hard, because Ms. Clerk is trying to make sure she attributes which comments to which person, and so you'll have to let us know each time you register a comment for her benefit. Okay, I'll come back to the body, any additional questions by any council members?
Yeah.
Ms. Ebert.
So, once the American Flats is completed, will we still need this additional flow shave? I mean, is this something that we'll just continue to need to?
So, we certainly won't need, yeah, Joe Kujiya for the record, we certainly won't need the flow shave for the purposes of sewer allocation, and that is the beauty of this multi-phase approach for the solution for the North Valleys. However, as I described previously, we will, well, we won't need it for, for the allocation purposes, but it's still part of our process, our wasting, and part of our solids uh, go through this line, and we'll continue to go to Tom Worf, so it, it won't be shaved, but they'll still go through that line. And then for operational flexibility, if it's a wet season, and we decide, hey, we'd like to reduce the impact on Swan Lake by diverting flows around the plant, sending those Tom Worf, sorry, Tom Worf temporarily, we can do that. And there's some other operational flexibility as well, but it won't be needed for the purposes the will serves.
Okay, all right.
Okay, thank you, and I'll, that'll close our comment, I'll come to you, Ms. Duer, for a motion.
Yeah, um, given everything I've heard, and that you put on the record, I appreciate your explanations. Um, I'm willing to move forward to approve item B six.
Okay, but motion by Ms. Duer, I'll second for the purpose of discussion, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Motion carries. Okay, item B seven, Madam Clerk, this was pulled by Ms. Breckus. Let's let Mr. Michelle get to the podium. And Ms. Breckus, did you desire a staff presentation?
There was um, additional supplemental material added since I reviewed it over the weekend.
No problem. Mr. Michelle, welcome, and we'll let you get started.
Good morning, um, for the, for the record, Mike Michelle, Engineering Manager and Development Services. We are here today to consider two agreements for a new at-grade crossing of the Union Pacific tracks at the extension of Moya Boulevard in conjunction with the development of the Reno Sted Airport Business Park. One agreement is a reimbursement agreement between the city and the developer. The other agreement is the at-grade crossing agreement between the city and Union Pacific for the actual crossing itself. So what we're talking about is the extension of Moya to the crossing itself right here, and the developer has two building permit applications in currently for plan review. And here's a layout of what it would actually look like. So in April of twenty twenty two, you approved a reimbursement agreement with this same developer for this same project for engineering design services. This council action involves a reimbursement agreement for the actual construction itself. The reimbursement amount is a little more than eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that represents the licensing and construction costs for the new at-grade crossing. The way this works is that Union Pacific does the actual work, the city pays Union Pacific for this cost, and the developer reimbursed the city. Union Pacific will only deal with the public agency, and the approval of these two agreements are really the last remaining items before the building permits can be issued. What we're talking about is a little more than one point one million square feet of warehouse. And staff recommends approval of these two agreements, and I'm available for questions.
Okay, Ms. Breckus, the floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you. Um, let's see, so, um, this, this map here of, that the airport, I think, provided to you. You say they've got one point one million square feet that will be using this.
Correct.
Do you have a traffic study on, is there a traffic study on? And does the traffic study contemplate this one million square feet?
It does.
But your title here says reimbursement agreement with DRPTA Sted LLC Dermody for the business park, the Sted Airport Business Park. How much square footage does the Sted Business Park involve? And is it outs, off of the top of this map, is it further on this map that you have from the airport authority? Does it go up further north?
I would imagine, um, future phases would be more, uh, more north, yeah.
Did you ever read the airport, uh, um, agreement, the airport agreement with, for the Sted Business Park, their master plan, if you will?
No.
But the, well, you know, so we're dealing with transportation issue here, what is the, what is the map? Does it include all the entire business park and trip generation there?
Uh, yes, the traffic study does contemplate the buildout um, of the, of the business park.
And what's the square footage?
Uh, the total square footage, uh, I, I don't know what it is offhand.
Do you think it's eight million square feet, maybe?
I don't, I, I don't have any idea.
Because if it's eight million versus this one million, it's different traffic volumes, right? Yeah, yeah, so, and then these future roads, because I didn't see that, this in the pocket, who's gonna build these roads? And, and where do these roads, how do these roads join up with the rest of our transportation network?
Well, the future road that you see there would be built by the developer, that would eventually get, um, extended north to the, uh, extension of Lemon Drive.
Mm-hmm, oh, the extension of Lemon Drive, that's.
In, in the future.
And who's doing that? Is, is that a funded project?
It's in RTC's, um, plan.
It's in the plan. Let me ask you another question, and that is one of air quality. Um, the traffic study that was done for Dermody's Business Park, did that go through an air quality analysis? Because, um, I see a lot of residents, I know they're not our residents, but I think we have other residences in the area, um, who will be exposed to, um, diesel truck, uh, exhaust. Do we, um, was there an air quality component to this analysis?
Well, I, I know with the business park, it went through a NEPA process, so.
Oh, it's done?
And so it would have been done in conjunction with that.
Did it go through a record of declaration, or, or, uh, no declaration, or did it go through a full NEPA scoping process?
Uh, I think it was a full, a, a full process.
Okay, where is that? Um, I, I haven't seen that, um.
It's in the federal registry, it's.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we'll come back to the dais, any other questions from anyone here at the dais?
I do. How much community outreach was done on this project, if any?
Well, like I mentioned, it, it went through a NEPA process, which is a public, uh, process.
Okay, and was there any feedback given from anybody?
I understand there, there were some comments that were submitted.
And what was the nature of those comments?
I did not read those myself.
Okay.
I, I, again, it, it went through a NEPA process, that's, that's really not a, a city process.
Okay, so is this gonna be a City of Reno road that we're maintaining?
Uh, the road, uh, no, it, it's, it's privately owned and maintained at the moment.
Okay, but they, is all of Moya privately owned?
Uh, what you see on the screen right here, it would be privately owned and maintained.
Yeah, but it's gonna connect to City of Reno or RTC Road?
Yeah, I, I mean, this connects to the existing Moya, which is public.
Yeah, okay, so this expansion is gonna affect the traffic on Moya that goes behind a residential neighborhood, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, that didn't trigger any kind of community outreach to the residents that's homes back up to Moya that are gonna be affected by the additional traffic that's gonna happen from this expansion?
Uh, th- this, this, these particular buildings did, went right to building permit.
Okay, but I'm talking about the road expansion, I mean, there's gonna be additional traffic going behind all these homes, and a lot of them use Moya to get to Red Rock Boulevard, uh, Boulevard.
Yes, Moya is scheduled to be widened from two to four lanes in the twenty twenty six to twenty thirty, uh, RTC timeframe.
Okay, and what's the target date on the completion for this expansion and business park?
Well, the building permits are, are very close to being issued for these two buildings. Uh, they could theoretically go, uh, you know, start construction very soon.
Okay, but what, what do we think is the completion date?
Uh, you know, that would better, better be asked of, of the, of the developer, I would say, a couple of years.
Okay, okay, um, and what, uh, did the traffic study say about, um, additional, uh, trips on this road?
Uh, it, uh, I think it mentioned about nineteen hundred daily trips.
Okay, and do we know what the current daily trips are on that road?
I would say it's about sixty five hundred on Moya.
Okay, so we're gonna have sixty five hundred plus another nineteen hundred.
Correct, correct.
So we're gonna have another, uh, nineteen hundred trucks presumably on the three ninety five or Virginia Street as well, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then presumably maybe commuters also going, not in big rigs, but to these facilities?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions from the dais? Oh, Ms. Taylor, I think, had her hand raised first.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, um, thanks for being here, Mike. When I was reading the staff report, I think I saw something new in it, and I was wondering if maybe you or somebody else could help explain, there's a little um, box on here on all of our consent things, and, um, I don't know, maybe Mr. Manager, you could bring us through this, but this, this request is, is not for a new road or a new development, or it's a reimbursement agreement, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we're not, the, the traffic counts, the building, the zoning, the permitting, everything has already been done for this?
Correct.
This is just a reimbursement agreement?
It's a reimbursement agreement between us and the developer, and it, um, and the other agreement is the at-grade crossing agreement, which spells out the terms and conditions.
And working with a railroad in my personal or professional life, I know it's, it's kind of hard to work with them, so there's an understanding that they need to work with a public agency besides the developer.
Correct.
Okay, um, Mr. Manager, would you mind just taking us through that consent review box, so make sure I understand this?
Of course, um, we've added a consent, uh, a, a series of items in these staff reports that end up on the consent agenda um, in response to some confusion as to why certain items end up on a consent agenda versus why they don't, and so these four bullet points essentially reflect the decision-making process for why an item ends up on the agenda. So in this case, um, the item is either an annual or a standard item that comes before the council for regular approval. Um, and in this case, the box is checked yes. That relates back to, um, or forward to bullet point number two, which is the items in agreement that is required based on an item previously approved by council, and you heard Mr. Michelle refer back to the reimbursement agreement that was previously approved, uh, between the, the parties here, right? You'll recall that the city is, uh, effectively a pass-through, because Union Pacific won't work with a, with a private developer, and so those two go hand in hand. Um, is the item included in the current budget approved and adopted by the council? No, it's not, um, in this instance, but we're also not spending any money on it, so that makes some sense. The other consideration is what percentage of the total city budget does this item represent? Um, normally, what you would see on, on consent are, are items that are included in the budget, and generally represent a relatively small amount of the, of the city's annual budget. In this case, because we're not spending any money, that number is zero.
Thank you, so, again, because I like really simple terms, we've seen it before, it's something that's been before us, it's not anything new, and it doesn't need to be budgeted for, because we're not spending any money on it.
Correct, you, you have seen this reimbursement agreement before.
And it, it, we're not spending five hundred.
We're not, yeah, yeah, there's no city cost here.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Okay, Ms. Duer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, uh, my question was similar. Excuse me, I, I wanted to just get clarified on the record that, um, what action the council took before that led us to this day?
The action that was taken last year was you approved a reimbursement agreement between us and, and the same developer for the same project for, uh, engineering design services.
Okay.
Now, now today, the re, the reimbursement agreement is for actual construction.
And then you said that it went straight to building permits, so there was no discretionary permit such as a tandem map, or change of the master plan, or change of zoning to accommodate this, is that correct?
Correct.
And on the airport, is the airport covered by a PUD? Or is it, uh, covered by anything, a master plan that says what kind of development would go? I know the airport's trying to develop this, isn't it the south section that has something like sixty five acres, I think? Or, um, if I got the number right.
I think you're right.
Um, so was there an anything, is there, was there a master plan change to accommodate this, or?
You know, I understand there's a master plan, uh, other than that, that's all that I'm aware of.
A master plan, but you don't know if there was a change, because I believe, I sort of remember that the council took an action, I mean, this might be for the developer to answer, but if you're not sure of the answer.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not totally aware.
Um, I don't know who's here from the developer. Is it Vince or Garrett, or?
What was the question?
My question is just, did the city council take a, a development action either to change the master plan to culminate this, a tandem map? Was there any kind of change to prepare for this, or did it just go straight to building permit?
This went straight to building permit.
Okay, okay, well, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the dais? Okay, Ms. Breckus.
Yeah, you know, um, I do like this little box, and I appreciate the dialogue between my colleague and the manager on, you know, outlining that, because I noticed it in the staff reports, but, you know, it says too, is this an item, an agreement required based on an item previously approved by council? And it says yes, and that's just the go-ahead we said to negotiate, but there is an item coming. And that is maybe getting to the heart of what Ms. Duer's bringing up, and that is the project of regional significance nature of this project, um, when it goes through, um, Reno, and then it goes up to the Regional Governing Board. There is no way that, and I've read previous iterations of this agreement with Dermody, that nine million square feet is not gonna be a project of regional significance. I think we're clearly seeing that, it, you know, it even led to. You know, it even led to the level because of the federal action of a NEPA, which I haven't been able to see that. So you've got two, you've got a million square feet in, and we've seen those before, those logistics buildings. But it's not going to be able to be segmented. Mr. Attorney, can I help you? I'm sorry, okay. So we're going to have the project of regional significance come through. So, you know, is this an agreement, is this an item previously approved by council? Yes, but what's to come? This is a very minor insignificant parcelling of a very major impactful regional project. And it will go through the project of regional significance unless there's some, you know, something not being done or there's some changes. So where are we at on the project of regional significance coming through, Mr. Manager? I don't want to ask a traffic engineer who doesn't staff the regional planning agency. I want to ask, you know, someone, maybe you could tell us, how's that sketched out look?
What I could tell you is that, like all, like the Reno Tahoe International Airport, the Reno Sted Airport and its attendant parcels are zoned airport mixed use. I can't speak intelligently today about what the allowed uses are in that zoning district. I can tell you that the project of regional significance criterion are laid out directly in statute. And when we hit that threshold, I'm certain that the project will proceed to regional review. But we aren't there today. And, you know, what we've brought forward is the net result of the path we've been walking down for more than a year with the airport and this developer, at the airport's urging, frankly. And so Mr. Michelle has done the legwork to examine the traffic studies and make sure that the proposal here meets with our needs from a traffic management and a public safety standpoint. And that's why we're here today.
May I just, Mr.?
Yes.
Yeah, so just in response to that, is I've been on the council for 11 years, and I annually have met with the airport executive director every year. It's not in my ward, but increasingly, we are impacted, and we've always been impacted by airport operations. About a year ago, year and a half, I asked to meet with the new director, and he wouldn't meet with me. The point that we've been going down the path with this developer? This body has not gone down any path with this developer, other than this little airport road. You know, maybe we provide a comment on the NEPA. You know, maybe the manager or someone did that. I have not seen that, I was not copied on those. But there hasn't been no public forum on this, okay? Let's be clear about that. Now, Mr. Manager, I want to ask very specifically.
Hold on, Ms. Breckus, I'm going to come back to you because you're over time. But we'll have one more minute of cleanup if there are any additional questions. Ms. Eber?
I just want to say thank you for this presentation, and thank you for allowing me to ask these questions because I know a lot of this happened before I was on the council. So I just kind of want to get up to speed a little bit and also kind of get it on the record for people that are watching this. I know Mr. Overholt is here today and gave his public comment regarding the street in particular. So I appreciate you doing your best to answer these questions. But if somebody from the developer side maybe can answer some questions, if they're available, I don't know.
Good morning, for the record, Garrett Gordon, on behalf of Dermity Properties. We have our team here, Councilwoman, so I might pass the baton depending on the scope of your question.
Okay, they're pretty brave, actually, and thank you for taking the time to meet with me earlier this week to answer some other questions I had. With regard to this project, do you know what kind of hour operations we're expecting with this? If it's going to be 24/7 or if there's going to be limited hours of operation?
Right now, it's based on. Thank you, Councilwoman. Right now, I'm Greg Park, I'm with United Construction Company, representing the developer. Right now, it's based on a 16-hour day, seven days a week, so.
Okay.
I'm sorry, can you state your name and title for the record?
Greg Park, United Construction Company.
Sorry, I missed it, thank you.
And I know there was comments mentioned about air quality. Can you let me know what was the result of those air quality tests? Or any kind of environmental impact studies that were done?
You'll get to talk to everybody, maybe, with the questions. Vince Griffith, Reno Engineering. How I can answer that is it would have been part of the NEPA process and a NEPA study. And at the end of the day, we received a Fonzie for this project, which is a finding of no significant impact.
Okay.
But it would be, I would be overstating if I knew exactly the pounds.
Okay, all right, and was that report just for the expansion piece? It wasn't for the road as a whole and the, you know, impact to the surrounding area? You know, where the traffic would, you know, connect with the rest of Moya?
Correct, it represented just the area you see here. There's been no studies on future road or impacts that RTC might be involved in or the airport in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
If I may, Vice Mayor, I just wanted to put on the record my commitment, Councilwoman Eber, to you and our conversation that will go to your NAB the beginning of next year. And happy to give a presentation on the future ideas for this project.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
No problem.
Okay, Ms. Breckus, you have one, oh, wait, Ms. Duer, did you wish?
Well, I just wondered if I could get my previous question answered. Does there, has there been any permitting changes up at the airport? Or do you anticipate any to accommodate the project? In other words, master plan change, tandem map, project of regional significance? I just wanted to better understand the scope.
My understanding, again, for the record, Garrett Gordon, is that this, these buildings before you will have no impact on the operations at the airport.
So you won't have to come back and get anything other? I get that we're doing a reimbursement agreement, I just wanted to get the bigger picture.
It's my understanding that, you know, this project is, of course, permitted by right. It's covered under the zoning. I believe future build-out is also potentially permitted by right, but we'll have to cover that as it's built out. I can't sit here today and say, I know what phase two looks like. I just know what the phase one looks like today.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Breckus, you'll have an additional round for one minute.
Yeah, just, you know, in my preparation for this meeting, I researched the airport website extensively. Did not see any, and the FAA, and I would presume the FAA would be the sponsoring agency for something like that. Did not see any Fonzie, any federal permitting. I did see on the minutes of the last airport trustee board meeting, and all my comments are for the record. I did notice that there was discussion that, on this item, from airport staff, that we are in the process of doing the FAA NEPA from Moya Boulevard. So I don't know if it's a comet period or whatever. I just staff, you know, bringing it to us to help us make decisions is very helpful. I want to follow up. As I look at this road connection to 395, I am so concerned about those households. Widening is not a thing. Widening is an unsafe thing potentially in a setting like this with so many single-family homes and residents around on a huge, tremendous truck traffic route to come with diesel trucks in this area. I'm very concerned about public health out there. But, Mr. Manager, you said that, I want to know, do you know if any of your staff is in it? Any contact with regional planning staff about the regional planning significance going through a project of regional significance for this?
I can't tell you down to a meeting-by-meeting detail what they have discussed between our planning team and the regional planning team.
Okay, I have to stop you now.
I'm certain, though, that, you know, if this project trips the thresholds for a project of regional significance, it will be reviewed in due course by the regional planning agency.
Okay, and that's where I want to pick up. You said, well, these two don't trip, but the next ones do. So say the fifth one, the 5 millionth square footage trips it. I'm not, I've been around the regional planning rules for a long time. I don't really think things get built and then there's a trigger, you know, because when the other ones? I think it's looked in its totality at the highest level. And frankly, I think this triggers it, as a matter of fact, a project of regional significance. Because we haven't had discussions with it. This is our first permitting of something that clearly has a traffic study backing up a development that triggers a project of regional significance. So let's go through the bigger impact analysis in this very sensitive setting and then go into this discussion about the mechanics of a grade crossing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Breckus.
Vice Mayor, if I may, I do, I do want to say, in my experience, Dr. Smith and the regional planning staff are particularly sensitive to avoiding the requirements of projects of regional significance by building things in the aggregate. And so they look out for that sort of thing, and they catch it regularly.
Understand, and of course, I'm the chair of regional planning, and so we'll be looking for it if it should come there. We'll close out discussion on this item at this time and call for the question. Can I get a motion, please? Okay, I have a motion by Mayor Sheevy, a second by Ms. Taylor. Any additional questions or comments at this time? Hearing none, I will call for the question.
Let me get a comment. You know, I'll vote to approve just because this is a reimbursement agreement. But, you know, I am very concerned about the traffic impact considering the upcoming widening's we're having with 395 in Virginia. I do wish that we could push this back, put a pause on this until we have the infrastructure to support this development. But I understand that this is not the time to have that conversation. This is just a reimbursement agreement. But I just want to state my concerns for the area and the infrastructure that we need to support these ongoing projects. So thank you.
Ms. Eber, thank you for your excellent comments. I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries six to one. Okay. The next item, Madam Clerk, is it B9?
It is item B9, pulled by Councilmember Duer from Suzanne Groneman.
Okay, well, one second, please, and we'll start off with some formalities. Do I have any disclosures? Okay, we have no disclosures, so we'll bring Ms. Groneman to the dais, lectern. And Ms. Duer, did you need a staff presentation?
Yeah, could you just tell us about this? This is the first time that I recall that we've gotten a grant for environmental education, and I think it's very cool. I was just wondering, since we've just gone into the process to get the geothermal going, when the geothermal would actually be going to where it actually be educating? Like, is that three years from now, four, five? That's my key question.
Sure, Suzanne Groneman, for the record, Sustainability Manager. I don't have a presentation, but I'll answer that question. When we started this process, the, so to give a little background, we started working with EnviroLution on this probably two and a half years ago. So when we started the process, we weren't 100% sure how the award would align with the construction schedule. The way that this grant worked is to apply, and EnviroLution had to disclose or identify sub-awardees, and they had to receive at least $5,000. They had to divvy up about $22,000 amongst these sub-awardees. So they approached us. To answer the question, it does not look like it will line up where we can be at that site teaching geothermal.
That's what I thought.
Correct, so we have talked to them, and they've already talked to the funder, that there's other options. We could host a event at another site and still talk about geothermal. They could learn about the drilling process. There's other things that they can learn about. We don't actually need the site up and running.
And will it be a series of educational, or is it one?
So it's, the $5,000 is for an intern to help coordinate the work.
Yeah.
Some sort of educational display or video or something. We're going to work that out once the Moana pool is open.
Good.
And then I believe it's two or three actual sort of in-class learnings that Project Recharge would teach.
Okay, would we be reserving the money for that display out of this $5,000?
Yes, that's the, that's the goal.
And is there a timeline for the grant? Like, in other words, it has to be completed in five years or 10 years or?
It's a short term, it's within the next year and a half or so.
So would you, you would be building the display to be done when the pool opens? Is that the idea?
We would identify, perhaps, we've also, we have also talked with some of the local companies involved in geothermal that have also agreed to help. That'll all be worked out in this grant timeframe process. The biggest part was really the intern and then teaching the students about geothermal. And then what is that educational component like?
And then what age students are we looking at here?
I don't, I don't actually know that answer. There is a representative from EnviroLution here, if you'd like to answer. And he can come up and perhaps answer that question.
Well, okay, I'll just say this, and my time's almost up. It seems like you could do this program even without Moana. It's called Moana, but even if, we don't know if Moana is going to go, right? We don't know if the company will be able to complete a project on the site. So the program could be using Visit Pepper Mill. It could be visit out at Oremat. It could be work with Avalon, that is, you know, have a presentation by Avalon about what they're expecting to do. But I was wondering what the age students, because this is kind of advanced stuff.
And I think Nick from EnviroLution can answer that question. I will add one piece, that was actually the goal of this, was geothermal education is not currently part of Project Recharge, which is what this grant is trying to achieve. So we wanted to step in and show that we were a partner under this process to make it a bigger, to grow that program and have it be part of their regular curriculum.
Well, it's very cool, I just had some questions on timing and.
Sure, and I'll have Nick come up just to answer that age question real quick.
Good morning, my name is Nick Owens, I'm with EnviroLution. Thanks for the opportunity to be here today. We work with K through 12 on all of these programs. I'm not quite sure which grade level will be coming out for this, but whatever grade level does come, we will obviously tailor the presentation of the work to the grade level. But 9 through 12, 6 through 8, and then elementary.
Okay, because I know there's a lot of work at eighth grade science. And then there's obviously a lot of science in high school. And I just wasn't sure, I just wanted to know more, but it sounds really neat, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And for my part, before you leave, sir, just thank you for your commitment to this very important project. I know that Ms. Duer has an incredible heart for not only the science behind it, but the joy that this project represents when it comes online with the Aquatic Center. And so just excited for many of the things that'll happen, and thank you for it.
Thank you very much for your support and participating with us, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Ms. Duer, can I get a motion, please?
Yeah, a motion to approve acceptance of this award.
Second, a motion by Ms. Duer, a second by Mr. Martinez. Any additional questions or comments at this time? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item B12, as pulled by Councilmember Breckus.
Thank you, a presentation from Angela Foose.
Okay, Ms. Foose, hold on one second before I see if we need a presentation, I'll ask Ms. Breckus.
Yeah, this was on our agenda for our special workshop last week. And I did have questions about it, and I want to see, were supplemental materials added to this one since we?
Yes.
Yeah, what were those supplemental?
I think just the staff presentation.
Yeah, could we get a staff, could we go over that staff presentation then?
Ms. Foose, welcome and good morning.
Thank you.
Let's give you a second to dial up the presentation. Oh, the clerks are on top of it today.
Good morning, Angela Foose, Development Services, for the record. This is a request to pass a resolution to sunset the program called 1,000 Homes in 120 Days. For a little bit of background, this program was passed in 2019. And at that time, we were in a housing, dire housing shortage situation. So this council passed a resolution to set up this program. The idea was to defer certain types of fees in order to help expedite some of these projects moving forward. So the program was intended to be something that would be short-term. We were trying to get 1,000 homes to market within 120 days. The way it worked is anyone that wanted to be a part of this program had to meet certain criteria. They had to apply, and council had to approve them. That all took place in January of 2020. So again, it was a very one-time kind of a shot or one-time deal for these projects. And it's not to waive fees, but to defer fees. So once you built your project, you had five years to pay these fees back. These were sewer connection fees and building permit fees. And so every year, over the course of five years, you would pay back 20%, and that would all be interest-free. We had 33 projects that came forward. Again, this was back in January of 2020. So of those 33 projects, these were all residential projects in our urban core downtown area. There was over 4,800 residential units that were part of that project. So where are we at today? Again, this was something that was intended to bring housing to market faster. A lot of things changed since that resolution was adopted. COVID hit, for number one. There's been a lot of changes in the economy, whether it's getting products or getting construction workers. There's a lot of things that changed over the last three years that we weren't in place when this plan was adopted or this program was adopted. So where we're at now is we have 123 units that have been fully built, and people are living in them. We have another 600-plus units. built, and people are living in them. We have another 600-plus units that are in the building permit phase, meaning we are currently reviewing those building permits. We have over 1,000 that have been approved through the building permit process and are now under construction. So now that we've kind of reached that threshold of 1,000 units, what we'd like to do is just sunset the program. The program never had any specific deadlines, so this is bringing this back to council to say, have we met those thresholds and that expectations? Are you ready to sunset the program? The way we would propose this works is that anyone that has not submitted a building permit by December 31st of this year would no longer be a part of the program. Anyone that has submitted a building permit by December 31st of this year can still be a part of the program. The recommended motion is before you, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, Ms. Breckus.
Yeah, I do have a number of questions. I just... I had a hard time understanding. So that one slide, going back a little bit, it showed... Yeah, so you had... How many came in altogether?
A total of 33 different housing projects.
33 different housing projects, and of those, 123 are fully constructed, and they're on a payback schedule?
Correct.
Okay, and 611 are somewhere, you know, in this office, you know, and under this, they have to pull their permits clean by the end of the year?
Nope. So they are already in for building permit, so they would stay in the process.
Okay. What if... Okay, so there's no timeline on them. They're in, they're just... Whenever they pull their permits, it's on their time?
Correct. As long as they keep active building permits, meaning they don't expire, they would be able to stay in the program.
But how can they keep active building permits if they're in review?
So if you're in review, you are in an active building permit.
Oh, that's what you're meaning. Okay.
If you stop any activity for six months, then we'll send you a letter and say you no longer active. You want to move that forward.
So if you've got red lines and they sit for six months, then you'll cancel that out. Now, 10:35 are in the program, and they're up under construction right now?
Correct.
Okay, so let me ask... I see the table, and I really hope that. So say the Stevens Street Apartments, they are built, and they're under... So on the table you have on the staff report, if it says amount deferred, that means they're on the payment plan?
Correct.
Okay, so then you've got this one, the Greyhound Bus, no activity. They came in for an agreement, though, right?
They did.
Okay, and so you've got another one. There was another way I had a hard time understanding was... Oh, one was subsidized and went into, you know, our other tract that we're providing for subsidy housing. There was one that said some removed themselves, some just canceled out, right?
Correct.
Right? Those are the ones removed from program, removed from program. So somehow, you know, some have been lost, already wiped out, in addition to the ones that don't get to through permit review. And then what about the... You had one that said, I think it was a big one, did not participate in program, under the Park Lane Lion Living. What is that table? What do you mean by that?
They moved forward with development and did not participate in the program. So they chose not to be a part of the program.
Okay, okay. So they're not part of your numbers or anything. You were just showing us?
They are not part of this slide, any of these numbers. That's correct.
Okay, because the table says... I'm just trying to understand where of each... The header to that table says, "The table below provides a breakdown of where each of the 33 approved projects are in the development process." So that one did come through in that January timeframe and asked for an agreement and got one?
They were approved by city council to be a part of the program if they chose to. They moved forward with their building permit without engaging in the program. So they built a building and were not part of this program.
Okay, so council put them in the program, not them?
They initially applied.
Uh-huh.
And so once you apply, you still have to go through additional steps.
Oh, and they never... Okay.
Correct. So they chose not to move forward with anything else beyond that.
Because they're the largest ones, so I was really trying to figure out what was going on with that. Okay, I get that. So, okay. Oh, and then the Harrah's conversion, you put them under construction.
They have building permits, and they are under construction with those building permits. They are currently not building at this moment today. But again, they have an approved building permit and have done construction, so we put them in the mode of construction.
Yeah, and here's the question. Here's the concern I have, trying to just figure out the mechanics of this, because they're sitting on $200,000 of our fees and deferrals, is I understand, and I toured it not that long ago, that project is really problematic right now. And so even though they have building permits, you know, done, they could not, you know, have a C of O in a unit, but they could come in and, you know, have an electrical check for an outside light that shines down on the sidewalk, right? You know, they could kind of little low-ball nickel and dime those and keep that money hanging out there for a long time. Is... I mean, how long... Do you have a timeline and how long they have to final their project and pay back that 209?
No, we... None of these projects have timelines. The way it's set up, as long as you are actively
Yeah.
doing construction. And so if they stop doing construction, we have a six-month window where we say you have not actively done construction and have not extended your permits. Once you expire, you're gone. You're out of the program. But as long as they... Any of these projects, as long as they keep actively doing construction or extending their permits, then they stay in the program.
What if it goes totally belly up? This thing goes totally belly up, changes hands and so on. Do we put a lien on it to get our money back?
So at this point, all of these projects that are part of the program, we have a lien.
Oh, we do have a lien. Okay.
Yep. I mean, here's the process. Once you get through the building permit stage, we sign a separate agreement with you, which is a lien on your property.
Okay.
Once you actually construct the project and you have your certificate of occupancy, that's when we say that is the date when we start looking at collecting your fees. So from that date, that C of O date, you have one year before you have to make the first payment.
Okay, okay. So they...
Ms. Breckus, I'm going to cut you off because I've got to go over two minutes, and I want to see if anyone else wants to join the conversation. Okay, for my part, Ms. Foose, I want to say a couple of things. Number one, what is the... I mean, look, I think the program was visionary, quite frankly. It was a moment in time when we were looking at the country, and we were seeing a lot of trends that were not positive. And I think Madam Mayor proposed the project, or the program, as a way to really jumpstart that construction opportunity. I think it obviously was successful because your numbers bear out that it more than doubled what was originally anticipated. Now, the 120 days part will, you know, sort of overlook the fact that some of these units are not under or out yet. I don't think anyone believed that in 120 days, 1,000 units were going to be open, and people were going to be living them. That was really not the interest. It was more about how we would, you know, generate enthusiasm among the construction industry and bring these projects to market. So ultimately, I believe the program was wildly successful. Why sunset it, right? What is the downside or the harm of allowing other projects tomorrow to come in and apply for it? What is the risk to us?
So there... It was a one-time deal. Nobody else can apply ever again. So those 33 projects that applied in January three years ago are the only ones that could be a part of this program. And so at some point, we had to ask ourselves, are half of these projects even going to move forward? If they're in the system now, and there's a lot of units in the system, great. Those projects are moving forward. They're using this benefit. We've accomplished our goal of getting another 1,000 units to market. So again, because there's a number of projects that have moved on, or for one reason or another, the developer says, "I don't want to do that project anymore," they don't have a need for this because they would no longer qualify for the program.
So ultimately, it's a tracking issue, right? It takes staff attention to continue to monitor projects in whatever phase they are in, which you're really thinking, hey, we could better use our attention elsewhere.
It is. And I will say, it is very time-intensive from a staffing perspective to track all of these at a building permit and a construction level and a finance level. So from that perspective, again, if we've reached our goal of 1,000 units, which we have either under construction and building permit, we've exceeded that goal. The question is, are we ready to sunset the program? And we can just put a stop date to say, if you're not in the system now, you probably won't be in the system at moving forward. Let's go ahead and just clean this up, move forward with the projects that are actively in the system, and those remaining few projects that have just kind of fallen off, then let's just call it good.
Well, and I think that because we had originally scheduled this item to occur during our housing workshop, I think everyone would have to agree that we continue to have a housing crisis, right? So this was one tool in the toolbox to address that. What is the downside if we wanted to have another program? We'd launch it next year, 2,000 homes in 240 days, or, you know, I'm just trying to understand, is there a moment at which it causes a fiscal impact to us, which we do not want to have, which negatively impacts the ability of the city to move forward?
No, and I think if this is... Or this type of program is something the city wants to do again, that's great. You know, let's go back to what was the purpose, trying to get housing to market faster. I do think with some of our proposed changes to the zoning code, we have the ability to do that with some of our zoning proposals. So while we may not need this program, I think there's other incentives that we can propose to the community that can help them to get housing to market faster.
Well, and ultimately, I'm not sure if I characterize it as incentive, right? The development community at that time really saw it as a way to bridge some of the financial issues. We haven't waived it. It's just a deferral moment where we collect it on the back end. And so
Correct.
we always got the same amount of money. And again, I'll just close my time, and I'm a bit over by saying, I think the mayor, the idea, the program, all of it, really was visionary, and I'm very thankful for the mayor's leadership on it. Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, and thank you for the kind words. I really appreciate that. I cannot take all the credit. This came at a time when Bill Thomas was our ACM, and we were incredibly concerned, or still are very concerned, about the lack of supply. A couple of things, and thank you so much, Angela. I appreciate the presentation. I also kind of want to point out a little bit because I think there were some talking points from the body up here that were a little confusing, and they were not accurate. So I also appreciate Councilman Reese sort of putting those back on the record of what the program was really designed to do. But a couple of things I also want to point out, the criteria, and one of them was within side the McCarran Loop, because, you know, we want to build up, not out. I think that's a much better strategy. We also know it's much more cost-effective for people to do this. The other thing is, it's... And everyone knows, I mean, up here, especially you, especially know, it takes a lot of work to get a shovel in the ground, and it takes a lot of time. And I guess to reiterate that this was something that they can pay on the back end. There was no subsidy here to the developers, so I want to be incredibly clear about that. And then also, I wanted to say, you know, I got some of this, oh, you know, Madam Mayor, you didn't do all affordable housing like you said. I never said that. It was housing of all types, because we know supply and demand is really the biggest issue when we're seeing a housing crisis. And you need projects of all types. Otherwise, if you only have a certain type of project, or, you know, housing affordability, the people that can afford housing will monopolize that housing because you don't have the supply and demand. So that was really the thought behind it. We still have a lot of work to do, obviously. We heard last council meeting about, you know, how far behind we are. And it's always really a balance, and it's challenging, because some people are like, oh, you know, we're growing too much. And then some people, you know, they're completely priced out of the market. And I think especially for people that work in our city should be able to live in our city. So we want to continue to stay incredibly focused. Like, in the Bay Area, there are police officers, there are teachers. They cannot live in the cities that they serve in. And so I think more programs like this to do anything we can to build up and not out. And there's still a lot of blight in this city, a lot of blight that we can continue to work on and solve problems with housing, you know, within the core. So I appreciate the presentation, but I did want to put those on record. And maybe you could, and I don't know if you have, and there, highlight some of the criteria, just so that it is on record. It was inside the McCarran Ring. It had to be within 120 days. What were some of the other criteria? I can't remember offhand.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. We... This was really looking at more of our truly infill, our downtown area. Didn't have to be in the downtown, but we were looking at opportunity zones. And we also required that you had built a project, as the developer applying, that you had built a successful project. You know, we had a price tag of, do you have proof that you've done this before? Built a project of at least $10 million. So it wasn't just, let's just throw it out and see who randomly applies. Like, we wanted good projects, and we wanted them in these infill areas. And really, a goal of 1,000 units in our downtown core? Like, we haven't had 1,000 units in our downtown core ever on record. So I mean, the fact that this program, I think, helped us to realize, wow, people are actually building in the downtown. They want to build in the downtown. That is huge. That is everything that we've been pushing for at the regional level, at our master plan level, at our zoning level. That's where we want to see density, to your point. We want to see infill. And so I think this program really highlighted that there are good projects out there that want to do it, too. And I think what they all told us is it's really hard to do financing, whether it was in 19 or 2019 or today. It's really hard to do multifamily anywhere in this town. But the financing challenges are a constant barrier to development. And so this really provided something new and different to help them. Again, not a waiver. It was not a subsidy. It was just a deferral. So the more that the city can do to help bring those infill projects, I think the better off we are. So I think this is a great testament to thinking outside the box and doing things that other communities aren't doing, but seeing the successes. I mean, we now have over 1,000 units coming to downtown. That's a huge win for the city.
Well, thank you so much. I really appreciate your dedication, especially because I know how much it means to you to do housing. So thank you so much, Angela, and also I want to credit Bill Thomas and thank him, too. He's probably not watching. He's a very busy man, but I would be remiss if I didn't thank him. So thank you so much.
Well, Ms. Foose, to your point, if you look at the addresses for folks and where they applied, we are talking about the type of housing that we were talking about in our last meeting, that missing middle. All of it falls in that range. I can't see anyone on here. I'm not sure why some of the Marmot properties removed. I'll have to circle back with Mr. Radon and some of those folks, because those addresses really interest me from the perspective of where they're located. But the programs, the ones that have been built or the ones that are still in building permitting review, are the kinds of locations where we really wanted to energize and increase the housing stock. And they are the type of units. These are not like million-dollar, you know, homes or something. These are all the type of project that the mayor really was envisioning and thought that would be built there. So your point is well taken. Thank you. Let me see if anyone else has any dis...
Madam Mayor, I do.
Hold on a second, Ms. Doer.
Yeah, I mean, I have to also say, I thought this was a great program. I really did. To be able to defer the costs, which often the challenge was the upfront cost. You know, until they have income coming in, it's hard to pay everything. So I think as an incentive, it was really remarkable. And we have now institutionalized some of these things. I mean, we have... And maybe you could even address that. I thought we had talked about shifting a payment of certain costs to CO. Can you speak to that?
Yes, so we do have citywide. It's not specific to this area. We do have the ability, if you want to defer paying your regional road impact fees
Right.
or your sewer connection fees, you can do that until C of O. And so that's something that we as a city do. Some of the other jurisdictions do that as well. But that's something that it's just to the C of O. What this program was, was extending it for five years.
Right.
So again, gave them another five years to figure out how to pay it back.
Yeah, so the program we have in place is very good, but this was that extra incentive on cash flow. Cash is very hard to manage, to get loans, to pay those off, you know, to be able to cover all the costs without cash flow coming in. You know, it's all out. And so I, at the time, I was very enthusiastic about the program. And to the mayor's point, she did not promise a Rose Garden as far as these would be affordable housing units. This was meant for all units of all types, and it achieved that goal. So look at how many are in construction. It's remarkable. So thanks.
Okay, Ms. Breckus.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So the State Street one, which is 66, is under construction for... And they owe $391,000 for 66 units. But then the largest one, almost as big as all the others with the exception of one that's under permit review, is the Harrah's, and they only owe $209,000, and they've got a magnitude of, you know, six, seven times. Is that just because they defer fewer fees than the 66 ones?
That's correct.
Huh?
That's correct.
Do you know the nature of the difference? Did the Harrah's one do sewer, or did they do building permit?
So the Harrah's has a number of different building permits moving at different phases. So the ones that are currently in for building permit under construction is that 200-plus number that you're looking at. They've been approved for 527 units, I believe. So as more permits come online, they'll be deferring those as well.
Oh, okay. I misread this chart. I thought the 527 was all under construction.
No, it's not.
I didn't see that sub footnote. I didn't see that sub footnote or whatever, so, okay, so the $209,000 is maybe only with 60 or 70, correct?
Correct.
Okay, but, okay, so that could go up quite a bit, that could-
It could.
That could go up to a million dollars or so.
It could.
And what's the nature of the lien, and how do we call that lien in?
I would defer to legal, if they want to answer any legal questions on leaning.
How's the lien sitting out there? Because, golly, if, how many units do they have of 527?
They have been approved for up to 527 to be a part of this program.
And how many have they permitted so far?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
Because they could go up to a million, what was the full nature of the agreement with the Harrah's? Does, do you know that, Ms. Metta?
In terms of-
Wasn't there an ultimate top end that they could ask for, or is it just whatever the permits come into?
Per that original January 2020 agreement, they can have up to 527 apartment units as part of this program.
And does that translate to a certain amount of fee deferral for building and sewer?
Again, so if they came in with a building permit today, they could be a part of this program.
Yeah, but how much-
So, if they, they've got, whatever the number is, and off the top of my head, I don't know, so I'm just going to throw a number out for discussion's sake, and say 80 units, just for discussion's sake. So, they still have a wide gap of several hundred units that they could apply for, but what we're saying is, if you choose to move forward with this resolution today, we would have to see that building permit submitted by December 31st of this year. If they don't submit a building permit for those additional units, then those additional units would not be a part of this program.
Yeah, I'm a little concerned about the Harrah's one, because if they, if they have deferral on only, say, 60 units for 200,000, and they're going up to 527,000, they could be sitting on deferral of, you know, several million dollars, you know, for a long time out. Ms. Metta, can I just ask you, was there an ultimate cap on how much they could, they got a deferral up to, you know, 700,000 or 500,000, did the agreement structure that way?
Jasmine made to City Attorney's Office for the record, no, the agreement is not structured that way. There's no unit cap, it's whatever they applied for.
Or financial cap, you know, up to a million in sewer, up to a million. Wow, there's a lot still on the table that, for the Harrah's one, I mean, it says under construction for 527, but really, they're still able to ask for a lot more deferral over there. And how does the lien work? If the property is sold or transferred, can we pull in the lien then?
So, how the lien is structured, it gets recorded at the time that we enter into the agreement, at the time of the fee deferral, and then as they pay, we release portions of that lien, so 20% at a time. If the project is transferred, they would have to, I mean, under the due diligence, the buyer would know that there's this lien, and they can either pay it off altogether, or they can take it subject to the lien.
So, they can't, okay, so can, the transferability is favorable to them, not to us, in terms of, you know, now you have someone who doesn't have a track record, a bank, you know, we didn't put that safeguard in, okay. Well, I'm going to support, but I think, you know, with this one in particular, there's quite a bit of room in here for them to get deferral, and it is a problematic project, from everything I understand, it was going back to a lender already, so I hope that works out.
Okay, Ms. Breckus, thank you so much, is that your motion?
No, I'm not going to make a motion, I'm just going to make a comment.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, and I just have a quick question for our attorney. Is it possible, I mean, we're going to close out applications, right? I mean, we're not going to allow, when we do this motion?
Correct.
Okay, but I think Ms. Breckus has a really good point, is it possible that we can include that if the project is transferred, that pay off the lien? Because that infrastructure's been put in, that sewer, whatever, we need to get paid back, so can we require that?
So, in order to amend the program the way it was originally structured, I think you would have to go through the same process.
But I mean, the project, the program didn't go to that level of detail, I don't think, and I think you have that flexibility within writing these contracts, especially if there's any more to come.
Certainly, we couldn't go back to the ones that already have the contracts-
Right, but if there are some that are still in the process that we haven't signed, I think that's a good safeguard, would improve our contracting process, and would ensure that the city gets paid back. I just think that's a great improvement to the program, to protect the city. Could you look into that and see if that's possible?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Ms. Metta, I don't understand the inquiry that's being made, because as I understand it, we have a lien. If, let us take and choose the city center project, if a lender comes in and purchases that, they purchase it subject to the lien, which means they have wiped out the lien, they're not a junior, or it's not a, some kind of an in priority lien, so I'm not understanding what the hand wringing is about the lien, so help maybe me understand it, using the city center as the example, am I incorrect that we have a lien on the city center today for some deferrals?
Correct.
And if a hedge fund comes in and buys it out of bankruptcy, or some kind of litigation, or probate, whatever it is, they take it subject to that lien, and therefore have to pay it off in that process?
Yes, I mean, they, I think we would have two options, either they would come to us and say, "Can we assume the lien?" And we-
Which is fairly unlikely, but more likely, a hedge fund would come and say, "Whatever liens are in, on the project, we will purchase it subject to wiping out those liens, no one purchases property and maintains the lien that's on it."
Right.
Thank you.
So, what you're saying is they would, they would pay it off?
Yes, they have to pay off the lien.
Well, that's what I thought, like, most mortgage, or most transfers-
Correct, it's the same as in your home.
But, but she said they could take it subject to lien and keep it rolling, because they had five years, maybe they have four years left now, three years left now, right? Is that right?
Mr. Vice Mayor, and just so, we get us back on track, this is a resolution to sunset the program. If there's background information about how the deal works, we can provide that, maybe offline, I mean, I just don't want to get into a position where there's conditions or direction given that are outside the scope of what we're talking about today.
Well, I'm fine to approve it, but I'm just saying a concern, and I like what you've explained, is that's kind of the general practice, okay?
Okay, so I have a motion by Ms. Dewar, can I get a second? I have a second by the mayor, any additional questions at this time?
Yeah.
Okay, you'll have one minute, Ms. Breckus.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, acting, I, I kind of push back to what the city attorney says, you know, we're sunsetting it, but we can sunset it how we want, and so, you know, I think that's an issue, I think that, you know, the 527, they can walk in and defer, I'm just going to say, you know, because the numbers didn't come forward, it's, you know, the table says it's fully under construction, under construction, and it implies 527, then we heard at the table it's not, so let's say it's 50, so there's 475 units hanging out there, they can come in for, you know, whatever the permit is on that, $3 million, in, in a long time from now, like, five, 10 years out, and I don't know what situation the building permit fund is, we're, I don't-
So, that's not correct.
Okay, well, I don't think staff comes up when we're talking on a motion, but I'll refer to someone on the rules there.
Ms. Foose, would you correct the record for me, please?
Yes, let me clarify, if you have not submitted a building permit, and so, if they have not submitted a building permit for those excess units, let's just say the 400-plus units, if they have not submitted a building permit by December 31st, they are no longer part of the program.
Oh, okay, I did misunderstand, I thought that because they've got the 50 in, they're, the project has a permit and it's rolling, okay, so it's specific to the individual units, in this unique condition of one that's a retro adaptive reuse versus the rest that are ground up, so, okay, that makes it much more comfortable to me then, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Breckus, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, Madam Clerk, we're now on to item B14, as pulled by Councilmember Dewar, and I'll just note, too, is, after we finish the consent items, I think we'll take a break, because we have a time certain on the one o'clock item, is that right, Mr. Manager?
I think it's one or thereafter.
Sure, hold on one second, Mr. Manager, is that correct?
We asked for a time certain of the pros plan at one o'clock, so, we should be able to get through B14, a quick bite to eat, and then come back at one o'clock.
Yeah, that was my intention, so, okay, Ms. Dewar, you pulled this item, I assume, because you're very proud of it.
Yeah, I am proud of it, but more important than my pride is that I wanted the council to know it's happening, and especially since it spans wards, and it goes into Ward Three for Mr. Martinez. What this is, is that for almost 10 years, I've been working on some kind of process to plan a trail corridor in the Virginia Range. We've had a tremendous development pressure up there, as each development comes in, we're working with them one by one to work out a detail on where a plant, a trail might go, and often it's just a one, three foot wide trail, but there is need for potentially, not just hiking trails, but biking trails, there's a need for wildlife migration, so passage for, whether it be mountain lions, bighorn sheep that have been put in the Virginia Range, horses, any kind of large animals that need to get through developments, need a path to get through, and it seemed like a very proactive, good idea to cite those things in advance prior to developments coming in. In addition, my residents in South Reno have been trespassing for years on property that is private, so they love to recreate, it's a passion of our Reno residents, but this range, in contrast to most other ranges in Nevada, is privately owned, 95% of it. Most other ranges in Nevada are in public ownership, either the BLM, Forest Service or something, so it's very unique in Nevada. What I've done is, with the assistance of the ARPA funds, I've finally been able to put this vision to life, I've invited a lot of people to the table, and one of those people is Jay, and I'd like to call up Jay to just describe to us what this project is, he, we're recommending that we allocate funds to the Parks Foundation, and he is with the Parks Foundation, and he would be the project manager, so if you could come up and give us the little presentation. I know you have just a couple slides. And by the way, I've been very wowed and impressed by other council members' use of their ARPA funds and the projects that they've started, so I thought you would enjoy knowing a little bit about this one.
It'll turn over in just one second, give the clerk a moment, and then make sure you identify yourself for the record, please.
Okay, hello again, Jay Howard here with Truckee Meadows Trails, and also the Parks Foundation, and I don't have a whole lot planned for presentation, but I, but I can describe the project as, as we know it, as we've kind of worked on it. This is a conceptual map of what that project might look like, and it's a line on a map, but it really represents a corridor that we want to put in place, it's a recreation corridor in the Virginia Range, and there's a lot we need to do in order to plan the project, and it's really about feasibility to start out with, and, and just to plan with, with an implementation plan, we are probably going to need to fundraise in order to get legal easements in place, but the first thing you always have to do is, is get a good line on a map that is looked at from a feasibility perspective, and some pre-scoping that I think we can do on environmental issues, you know, wildlife issues, rare and endangered plants always comes in, and of course, cultural and archaeological issues need to be looked at. So, so that's, that's what we're planning on doing with this project, is just looking into the feasibility of getting this project in place, and I think that's, that's a map of the project, like I said, it's, I would envision, and I think we have a common vision, that the project is going to most likely stretch from the Hidden Valley Regional Open Space and Park, south all the way down to Geiger Grade, and that's about six, almost seven miles. We also want to look at overlooks and access spurs into, well, that, that top one up here is an access spur over to Veterans Parkway, and then this one down in here is a potential aspect, access spur into those neighborhoods there, so there might be more of those, it's all about access and connectivity for the Truckee Meadows Trails program, and it's interesting that when I learned about this project, it was something that I had already noticed in terms of looking at the region and where we need trails, where we have trail deserts, meaning where we don't have trails, that there should be trails, and this, this, this area above Damani Ranch really represents an area that needs connectivity, and the project just really has a lot of potential from that perspective.
Could you tell us, Jay, just really quickly, the partners that we've put together for the project?
The, the, the partners are, well, we've got, we've got people from the Trails community and the planning community, so Jeremy Smith from the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency-
Well, let me just go through it, I think that you've got the, the Regional Planning Agency, you've got Washoe County, the Trails Coordinator for Washoe County, I just want to mention that this is in the sphere of influence, so part of it's in City Reno, part of it's in the sphere, so it's us, but it's also working with Washoe County, and I think there's a couple other organizations that you've reached out to, and I think the overall big picture is maybe even a trail system all the way down to Carson City, I've understood, so, really a big vision for our community, and I've also heard it discussed that there's a lot of interest in ringing the Truckee Meadows with some kind of trail system, you know, this would complete a portion of that. All right, well, thank you for being here today, and I'm looking forward to working with you, and Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve this item.
Well, and before we get a second, I'm going to just add some comments, first of all, thank you for your passionate advocacy for our parks and our trail system, both. I certainly am of the belief that this is, is really a legacy-defining opportunity, and I thank Councilmember Dewar for having the vision and sort of the fortitude to make this happen, because, as Ms. Dewar said, everyone had some choices with the way they allocated certain funds during the discussion of the ARPA allocations, but this was really Ms. Dewar's leadership and her bold vision for what could be. I know that it's been a passion of hers for many years, we've hiked on a number of different locations together, and always I learned something new about this beautiful place we call home. This, like I said, I think Ms. Dewar will be a legacy-defining opportunity for you in terms of the importance that it plays in our region, and just that you stood in the gap and found a way, and ultimately, it's going to have some offshoots of it that I think are even unknown today, so I'm very honored to support you with a second.
Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions or comments at this time? Hearing that, I'll call for the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll be in recess until one o'clock, where we'll be teed up and back to run our discussion of the pros plan.
Just for the record, we're reconvening at 1:12, and all members are present. We do have public comment on this item, so if you'd like to start there, we have Mac Rossi and Colin Robertson.
Perfect. Love to see both of them. Come on up. Hi, Mac.
Madam Mayor, I have a disclosure. Maybe I should read that first.
Yes, why don't you? That'd be great.
Okay, thanks. Sorry about that. Item D1, Parks Recreation Open Space Master Plan, Pros Plan. Madam Mayor, fellow City Council members, Madam Clerk, in the interest of full discrep- transparency, I have a disclosure to make on item D1. In September 2022, City Council approved $150,000 contract with Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated to develop the Parks Recreation Open Space Pros Master Plan. Stan Tech then subcontracted with City Gate Associates, LLC, and more specifically Julie Conway, who served as the city of Reno's Parks and Director for seven years. Item D1 is a presentation, discussion, and potential adoption of the Pros Plan. I'm disclosing the fact that my husband, Armando Ranelis, is an hourly employee at City Gate. Armando joined City Gate in 2023, April 2023, or, no, I'm just going to say in 2023, after leaving the city of Sparks, months after City Council awarded the initial contract to Stan Tech, and then Stan Tech created a subconsulted arrangement with City Gate. Armando's not a partner at City Gate. His compensation is entirely based on billable hours completed for client, clients on projects he is assigned. Armando is not assigned to work on this project. I can confirm that he will never be assigned to perform work on this project. Moreover, Armando has not spoken to or counseled anyone at City Gate about this project, nor will he in the future. On this matter, I sought guidance from the City Attorney's Office. Here, I've been advised that I commit, have a commitment in the private capacity of the interests of my spouse and his employer, City Gate. However, given the timing of the initial award of the Stan Tech contract, the subcontracting relationship between Stan Tech, City Gate, and Julie Conway, and the lack of any pecuniary impact on our household's income or my husband's employment, I've been advised that the independence of judgment on a, of a reasonable person in my situation would not be materially affected by my husband's employment, City Gate, with City Gate, to warrant abstention under NRS 281A 420 Sub 3. Madam Clerk, please accept this disclosure and lodge it on the record for this meeting and subsequent meetings pertaining to this item. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right. Any, any further public comment, Madam Clerk?
Mac Rossi, followed by Colin Robertson.
Good afternoon. Mac Rossi, for the record. Nice to come in the afternoon, avoid the rush here. My goodness gracious. I am here in support of D1. I've been, I'm, first, let me say, I want to thank the Parks Department for this nice, I won't say t-shirt attire that's representing the Parks Department. So thank you for their department for that. I'm asking, asking you to support this program. I've been on the Parks Commission for quite a while. I'm not saying I'm represented right now, but they've been working hard on this one, and I believe that it finally got somewhere. There's a definite need for 87 parks in the city that are all in need of help, but I'm going to emphasize on Paradise Park, which is in tremendous need otherwise. Thank you very much.
Colin Robertson.
Good afternoon, Council and Mayor. My name is Colin Robertson, for the record, Ward Two. And I just want to share that I think there's a great need for the work that this master plan covers in our community. I, some of you know that I was the founding administrator of the Nevada Division of Outdoor Recreation, and I advocated strongly for Nevada's outdoor recreation economy and the impact that outdoor recreation has on communities across the state. It's more than a $5 billion economic impact annually for, for the entire state, and you may know that just even last week, Outside Magazine had identified the city of Reno specifically as a really important gateway destination for the Lake Tahoe Basin and the Sierra Nevada Mountain Range in general. And those are just really important high quality-of-life indicators that are bringing people to this community. Our good friend, good friends at Edon, for example, have espoused frequently the importance of outdoor spaces, parks, and trails for their economic development leverage, and just really important quality-of-life indicators and health indicators for communities in and around Reno particularly. And I am just wanting to, you know, I think the mayor hosted the U.S. Conference of Mayors in June of last year, and we had a really rich conversation there about the opportunities for outdoor recreation and parks, trails, and outdoor space in this community at that event. And I think that that is something that's really commendable about this master plan and the work that's gone into it. I know a lot of work has really helped build a framework for what this master plan conveys. So I'm hopeful that others in the community will have spoken up for it, but I was here today to do that on my personal behalf, my family's behalf, and our city. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you so much, Colin. And by the way, your presentation was instrumental in a lot of discussion that I had with mayors about what that looks like moving forward, and a lot of them said, why don't I have a Colin Robertson in my city? And I said, well, because we've got him.
Yeah, you can't have him.
You did a phenomenal job, so thank you so much. Any more public comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just for the record, Iris Gale Pepperd was here earlier, was not able to stay, but was, left a comment in favor of this item. Additionally, we received two written comments to our office, one in favor and one letter of concern. Those have been distributed to the Reno City Council and are part of the permanent record. And with that, we have no additional public comment.
Okay. Thank you so much. Before we begin, there is someone sitting here that I would be remiss if I did not recognize, and that is Julie Conway. And I did not recognize you because you have the cutest haircut. I love it. It's adorable. It's all grown out. It's so cute. But thank you so much for being here. And for those of you that don't know, you were our Parks Director for a long time, and, and look at her. She's still here doing the work like, this is your passion. You never, it's like you never left, and you continue to keep doing the work, and so I just, thank you so much. I'm just really, really grateful for Julie, so, so thank you for being here. All right. Take it away. We're excited for your presentation. So go ahead, Nathan.
I was going to lead off with Julie's haircut, but you beat me to it.
These are the things that women notice. We notice haircuts.
Well, I was feeling pretty good about myself that I noticed, and yeah.
And isn't it always women that notice that men just got a haircut? I'm always like, oh, you just got a haircut. Men never notice that, but it's all good. Thanks.
Well, thank you. Nathan Oliat, Parks and Recreation Director, for the record. It's really exciting to be here today and have a presentation. Are we pulling that up? Yep, okay. That's Mark Maldonado. I'll introduce him later. He did his hair today. I don't think he got a haircut, though. It's really exciting to be here at this point. We're here to hopefully adopt the Parks and Recreation and Open Space Master Plan. With that, we want to acknowledge as a part of this presentation where we are currently, and, and there's been a lot of, I think most people would agree, we're not loving where we're at, and we want to do better, and we want to continue to grow, and this is sort of, sort of building base camp as we, as we climb Mount Everest, right? This isn't the end. This is the, the really well-formulated beginning. And this, this plan, as we've acknowledged where we're at, is, is an expression of the interest of our community and of this, this council and our Rec and Parks Commission about where we want to go. So with that, we'll go to the next slide here. Where, and an example of that is, is in the 2017 Reimagine Reno Plan, our outdoor spaces, our parks, and access to those things were the number one thing that our, our public brought forward, that they wanted to see. And, and as with any good plan, there was an actionable strategy to make, building a pros plan and, and preparing a pros plan a part of, a part of executing that master plan for the larger city. In 2008, just as a reminder, was the last plan we've had. That's far too long, is a very good assessment. Tells us where we, where we were and where we wanted to go, so very similar to this plan. But obviously, things happened in that timeframe. That's not unique to Reno. A lot of cities struggled with continuing their Parks and Recreation development through, through the recession. But it's, it's an example of we need to make sure, and a reminder that we need to make sure that we keep this thing open, and we keep it alive, and we keep bringing it forward with different pursuits of those, those opportunities to, to improve. Just a little project timeline, there'll be a little more in-depth timeline later, but this has been two years, a little over two-year process, so it's been a while. It started with robust community feedback and public input from yourselves, from staff, from stakeholders, moved on to selecting Stan Tech with a consultant in 2022, and City Gate to help support that. And over the last eight months, we've been working through the last phases of public input and making sure what was important in 2021 is still important now before we adopt it. And we went to the Rec and Parks Commission a few times to show them the drafts, get input. We've been back to you, you all individually, and now we're here today after, to present a very, very good plan. So what this plan does is, sorry, let me just flip my notes here. It, it, it tells us where we are and why. It tells us how we got to this place. We didn't magically appear. There was decisions, action, inactions in different places, and so now we're here to, to make sure that we, that we move forward in the way that we want to. It consolidates our stakeholder vision for where we want to go. It gives us shared language for future decision points. It sets expectations for staff and electives to explore and decide on how we want to do that through actionable steps. Doesn't mean we're going to do everything that's in it, but we're going to explore them to, to find multiple opportunities to improve. And then, just a reminder in here, it will tell us several times that we need to come back to you with those decision points and come back to the public to make sure, again, what was important today is important two years from now, five years from now, and 10 years from now, through appropriate assessment and updates to the public. So this will be probably my longest slide, but I think it's extremely important that we recognize kind of a three-legged stool approach to feedback and input. So I want to, so thank some people, but ultimately use this slide to acknowledge that this is the community's plan. This is Reno's plan. It's not Nathan Oliat's plan. It's not Jamie Schroder's plan. It's not City Council's plan. A lot of people had input here, so wanted to thank first City Council for your vision to initiate the plan based on the 2017 Reimagine Reno Plan, our Recreation and Parks Commission and commissioners who have, have worked and advocated for years on this. If you, if you ask Mike Ginsburg, it's been, I don't know how many decades, kids have graduated, he said. So our Reno Access Advisory Committee, our Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, Urban, Urban Forestry Commission, a lot, I've, I think I missed Ward Two as a presentation, but we went to the NABs to, to update them again where it's at with the plan and get their feedback one more time, and they've, were gracious to provide that. Also, as another part of that stool, our area partners, Truckee Meadows Parks Foundation, RYSA, the Youth Sports Association, One Truckee River, Keep Truckee Meadows Beautiful, Truckee Meadows Trails, our biggest little B-city friends, Tahoe Pyramid Trail, the Washoe County School District, Washoe County Parks, who are important partners, is we want to make sure all of the inventory is accessed as we grow. And then with that, our staffing consultants, I want to thank them as that third leg, all of our city staff, my colleagues over here, so intelligent, so smart, truly experts, our comms team who at multiple occasions presented this to the public to get input, and were successful in doing that. And then I want to highlight on our team, Karina Mercier, who I was able to get to come down here today. It would be not her preference to be highlighted, but hopefully she'll forgive me later. And I want to highlight my predecessor, Jamie Schroder, for really putting this on a tee for me. You know, tee ball, it's hard to miss when it's on a tee for you, so I want to thank her for that, and I know that, that she was a big part of initiating this as well. And then finally, Barb, Barb Santner and Mark McDonald with, Maldonado, sorry, Mark Maldonado with Stan Tech, and then Julie Conway with City Gate, who have been with us the whole way, and their staff and team that are on there as well. And then last but not least, again, to illustrate that this is Reno's plan, the thousands of residents who provided input at, at different stages in the plan. So with that, I'll turn it over to Barb, who will take us through Stan Tech's portion of the presentation.
Thank you. Actually, Mark's going to start off the presentation.
Appreciate it, Barb. Thank you, and thank you, Nathan. Council members and Madam Mayor, thank you so much for the opportunity to present this monumental moment of the City of Reno Parks Recreation Open Space Master Plan. My name is Mark Maldonado. I'm a senior principal with, with Stan Tech, and, and I was the lead planner along with Barb on, on the execution of, of this master plan. As Nathan mentioned, our, our partners, City Gate Associates, as well as city staff and the community, have really led to a amazing deliverable of a master plan that, that is very much the community's vision, the community's ideas, and we were just, you know, a, the professional consultants that were able to provide some guidance on how we could get a roadmap to, to get you to success. Next slide, please. So our presentation is going to be short and sweet, but it's broken up into three parts. One is, is just a recap on the, the initial findings and our due diligence. The middle part of the presentation is really focusing on the changes to the, to the final master plan that, that occurred since the last draft that you guys reviewed. And then lastly, we will be closing with the implementation strategies and kind of next steps of the master plan. So with that said, I just wanted to recap on the planning process. Hopefully, this, this graphic is nothing new to you guys. It's something that we've been introducing since, since our contract got approved early on. But overall- But, um, overall, the, the, uh, planning process covers A to Z, uh, from when we started off the project through due diligence, the vision and goals, the needs assessment, the, the identifying partnerships, action steps. And then now we're, we're at the tail end where it's, it's steps nine and 10, where we're really focusing on implementation and plan approval. You know, while I say, yes, our work is done, it's really not. This is when the work really starts. You know, adopting the plan is really the first step of success and the first step into implementation. But, uh, upon plan adoption is really where we roll up our sleeves, get our hands dirty and, and really start working hard to, to start translating that vision into reality. Next slide, please. So, um, just to recap on some of the summary of findings. I, I don't want this to be a negative slide, so I'm gonna call it a, you know, the findings of opportunities, really. But to recap that, um, when we did our, our, um, assessment and, and gap analysis, we did discover that, that the City of Reno is currently extremely underserved according to peer cities and the National Recreation and Parks, uh, Association standards by nearly about a thousand acres. That kind of echoed in, in the fact that the, the funding for operational budget analysis was also, you know, in deficit of nearly nine million, uh, for, for a year. And also with staff, we, we noticed that staff, um, were lacking in order to, to fulfill the requirement of a, of a solid, uh, parks and recreation system that would be similar to a size of Reno, uh, based on full-time employees per 10,000 population. And while we discovered a lot of these, these gaps or, or missed opportunities, while they were harsh realities, it also presented a good perspective on opportunities of how we can identify strategies and opportunities to really start closing in these gaps to, to give us not only a bigger bang for the buck, but a really effective parks and recreation system that could be sustainable and very, very much forward-thinking. Now, I did want to add a, a caveat or, or just an anecdote here. You know, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan is, will have a lot of information in it. It's very cumbersome. It's very comprehensive. While, while it might be intimidating, we provide a lot of that information because we want to give the tools for success. And we want to make sure that, that those, those strategies, the objectives and, and recommendations are all kind of working towards that end goal. So while these numbers might be a little bit appalling to some, you know, again, we see it as an opportunity to say, we now have a solid plan that, that has unified the community's visions and their desires or needs or wants that can put us on a good trajectory to help close these gaps and these numbers. But more importantly, to make improvements that, that we can start bettering the quality of life for, for the Reno residents. But they didn't build on a sustainable, uh, parks and recreation system, uh, platform that will overall elevate the system as a whole. Next slide. I'll hand it over to Barb here where, this is where we're gonna, uh, highlight some of the changes that, or revisions that happened in the Parks Master Plan final document, that, that you guys have reviewed that are a little bit different from the previous draft that was presented, uh, presented a couple of months ago. Barb?
Thanks, Mark. Uh, for the record, I'm Barb Santner, Landscape Architect and Planner with StanTech here in Reno. So our team, uh, conducted a survey that was in July and August of this year. Uh, it was an online community survey. And the purpose of that was to update the community on what was happening with the master plan update and also to kind of help identify some priorities. So here are some of the highlights of the survey. About 5,000 website visits, um, 365 responses. And then this, uh, also shows some of the earlier responses of the survey that was conducted by staff in 2021. And some of the idea wall comments, the, uh, survey was done in a fashion that people could provide a, just a write-in comment. So we got a, a number of those as well. So some of the highlights of that survey were expressed the need for more swimming pools, to enhance existing and future recreational facilities and amenities to be more multi-generational in nature, to keep the current parks and trails well-maintained, improve the quality of natural resources at existing parks and acquire land for future parks and trails. Uh, some of the other questions, uh, to summarize, uh, where do you live? It was pretty well represented. You can see that was question one in the, uh, upper left, pretty well distributed. Um, question two, by considering the limited amount of funding, please rank your top recommendations from most to least important. Number one was improve existing or develop new facilities to support the newly envisioned park system. Number two was identify and acquire land for new parks and facilities. Three was to program, develop and activate the Truckee River, uh, with amenities. And four was to expand and create additional recreational programming. Question three was, uh, in order to develop the park and recreation improvements, which of the following funding options would you support? And a little hard to read on this slide, but number one was increase fees on new residential development. Number two was to dedicate a larger share of the room tax. Three was to increase grant funding and then other options less, uh, supported as, as going down that list. Question number four, pick your top three recreational facilities that are needed the most in the City of Reno. Top was nature trails. Second was swimming pools. And third was hike and bike trails. And I just thought that was interesting because it was kind of in, uh, very much in keeping with the results of Reimagine Reno in terms of just the desire to have outdoor facilities. Maybe not swimming pools, but the others. Uh, question five, pick the three most important items to consider in the de- design of the Truckee River Corridor and downtown public spaces. River water access was number one. Shade trees and shade structures. Question six, pick your top three recreational programming and events. The top three were farmer's market, outdoor movies and concerts and performing arts. Question seven was, uh, to provide, to continue providing a high-quality level of parks and recreational services, the city needs to acquire more land. What type of parks do you feel are most needed in the city? And neighborhood parks came out on top, followed by community parks, specialty parks and trails. And with that, Mark is gonna continue, uh, our presentation talking about goals and recommendations.
Thank you, Barb. Uh, next slide, please. If there's one thing that this plan, um, did not do was it was not created in a silo. I think that's one thing that we're extremely proud of was not the, the robust engagement, the, the number of, of stakeholder representatives and community opinions that, that were all integrated to help develop the master plan goals, the recommendations, and then also some of the strategies, uh, as to how we could translate a vision, um, into reality. Um, the master plan goals that, that were previously presented in previous drafts did, did not change. One thing that you will see in the final master plan was that we did expand on the objectives on, uh, and strategies on how these goals could be accomplished.
Mr. Maldonado, if, if you don't mind, I'm gonna pause you really quick. We're having some audio issues and the recording is not picking up, um, the Zoom comments. And so we are gonna request, um, a short recess at this moment so that we can, um, get with our tech team to figure out what's going on so that everybody can hear him.
Okay.
So we're gonna reconvene at 1:37 and be back hopefully in 10 minutes. Mark? Mark, if you can mute your computer. I think we're getting some reverberation. Perfect. Okay. And then we're gonna go ahead and unpause. I'm gonna do a sound test with you to make sure that our YouTube feed is picking it up and then we will proceed from there. Okay, go ahead and reconvene. So we're reconvening at 1:48? Testing, Mark, can you hear us?
Yes, loud and clear. Can you hear me?
Give us just a second. Okay. So, Madam Mayor, at this time, it looks like we do have audio resuming on YouTube, so we are good. Um, and it's my understanding if you are prepared, we can continue the presentation or we can move into the comment section.
All right. Thank you so much. Um, Nathan, you ready? Oh, that's right.
Nathan Oliat, Parks and Recreation Director, for the record. Barb is gonna continue with the presentation.
Okay. All right, come on up, Barb.
I will try to make it brief, but, um, so Mark already went through the master plan goals and explained that, um, a few of the goals were rearranged, uh, following public comment and feedback from, from meetings with, with all of you. And then, uh, from that, we also developed our top recommendations. And, uh, number one has to do with developing sustainable funding strategies. As he explained, kind of the status of funding is pretty limiting for continuing to develop new parks or, uh, maintaining existing, um, improving existing and develop new parks, trails is number two. Three, identifying and acquiring land. Four, programming and developing the Truckee River Corridor. Five, expanding and creating additional recreation programming. And then Julie is gonna talk about some of the implementation strategies.
All right.
Thank you, Barb. For the record, Julie Conway, Senior Associate with Citygate Associates. And thank you, Madam Mayor, for your kind comments. I appreciate your recognition. So the implementation strategies and, uh, what we have in the plan are specifically options, um, that really represent where the rubber hits the road. I mean, this is a roadmap for the community, for the council, for the city. This is where staff and the community can really come together and, and help make it happen. This slide just shows, as you well know, the, um, the past and the current operational funding for the, the recreation system is supported mostly by property taxes, um, and also user fees. That's a primary support. Uh, certainly, the capital side is the residential construction tax as well as, uh, it's been supported by federal funds in recent years, thankfully, and, um, and very generous grants. So that, that has been, um, that's been the basis of the support. This slide also shows the percentage of the dollar amount of property tax, uh, per the value of the house. And so what, what the, uh, number one recommendation that we're saying with the funding strategy and options is that the funding base needs to be broader. We need to broaden the funding base. This is typical of agencies, um, of Reno size, larger and smaller. So broaden that funding base. Um, and, and we've, and we heard you, we heard the community. Uh, we were, when we went through the process, we heard that it said, look at some bold options. Bring back some bold options, some things that are not just run-of-the-mill. Um, so in the plan, we won't go that over that today, but in the plan, uh, we have include, included, uh, seeking, uh, additional funding support through voters, voter-approved, uh, measures, whether via bond measure or other funding support for sales tax or vehicle registration fee. It could be many other things, things that might be available. Or even an up to considering a special district option, which we heard from the community and, and the, um, and the council. Next slide, please. So, um, the, this is a, a matrix that staff and the consulting team put together for your information that does kind of a compare and contrast. It's helpful to see, uh, what options are out there. So this is something that can be, um, very helpful. Next slide. And then part of the, a big part of this plan, and this is what we're, uh, you will focus on, staff will focus on, and that the, we have several funding options, um, that are 36 in, in fact, that are included in the plan and stratified by service area. So for example, inclusive play, um, there are examples for money for inclusive play. So, and then there's a, this is, um, 36 different ones is about four or five pages. So all of that is also included in the plan. Next slide. So what we've included, and this is, um, we'll finish on this, um, idea of the implementation matrix. You see the boxes at the top. Um, we have an implementation matrix that ties each goal with objectives, with action steps. Who, what's the timeline? What we feel the priority is, what the cost might be, the staff involved, all of that. That we have done that for each goal and each objective. And it's tied, you'll see in the plan, the implementation matrix. Each goal has this. It ties back to those top five recommendations. So it all ties together. And what we would recommend and what the plan recommends is that the, one of the overarching recommendations with funding and strategies is to look at both operating and capital. Capital is so easy. I want to say so easy. It's much easier to find capital money now. But operating, as you well know, is more difficult. So when the city and the community looks at this plan, is look at those together. Don't look at them separately. Look at, if you look for capital, then how are we gonna maintain it? Operate it, fund it, serve it. If you look for operating, how, what facilities is it going to be held at? How is that gonna be supported by capital? So holistic strategic approach is what we're suggesting. And, um, the, the main thing is with this implementation matrix, which is several pages long, is that the city can focus on, on how to access it and establishing it. And one, I'll be very, will be very specific. One of the things that we have suggested is that to do that, the city should look at, um, hiring either a half or full-time individual to focus on getting those funds and maintaining that strategy, that holistic approach. Because what you value, what you focus on, then you can make happen. So that is, again, one of the action steps that is in the implementation matrix. So that shows you how it drills right down into, what do we do tomorrow? What do we do for next budget season? Where do we go in the community? That type of, of detail is included in here. So thank you for your attention on that. And now I'm gonna turn it back to, uh, Barb and she'll wrap it up. Thank you.
Perfect. Great job.
For the record, Barb Santner, Landscape Architect and Planner with StanTech. Again, uh, how do we get help? How do we help and how, what are the next steps? Some of the advocacy ideas are, uh, that the master plan should be considered a living document. Um, it should be updated. The council and, uh, Reno Wreck and Parks Commission should be updated at a minimum every year. A consideration would be to establish a planned action committee to- A consideration would be to establish a planned action committee to help implement the vision of the plan and help with accountability, develop partnerships, it's a, it's a big lift, and one person can't do it all, it really needs to engage community members, celebrate the little things that are accomplished along the way, keep the community engaged and provide transparency, and then ask for help when needed. And that concludes our presentation.
All right, fantastic job. I absolutely love it, love it, love it, and I gotta say, you know, Julie, 'cause I've had the opportunity to work with you, I really value your opinion and your expertise on this, like, it's just come full circle, this is super, super exciting, we've talked about those funding sources, those are challenging, and one of my biggest ones, you know this, we, and you shared the same ones, council, all of my council members, I'll say, Councilwoman Doer and Councilman Reese, the big concern we've always had is the lack of sustainable funding for the river, and I'm surprised that was number four, was that four? I think it was four. I thought it would be number one, but regardless, it's just hard to believe that we have never had that sustainable funding source, so whenever you talk about all those advocacy things, when we make this motion, I don't know if it's just, if this is action, but we should, you know, include that in the motion, make sure it's a living document, everything that you mentioned, Barb, was spot-on, you know, and keeping everyone else engaged, we cannot do it alone, it's, it's such a heavy, heavy lift, I didn't realize it, I think we met, what, five years ago, right before the pandemic, so all the work we were doing, then it completely stopped, but now we're back in the swing of things, we've got to get this funding source in a place that is sustainable, and I think people, especially where we live, 'cause we're known for such incredible outdoor recreation, you heard from Colin, it's one of the reasons why people do live here, I think that they want to see it invested in, I think they're willing to sort of step that up, we talked about the Parks District, and, you know, part of the issue that we've heard is that it's kind of, you know, if you just outlined, you know, certain areas, it would be too small to get that sustainable funding. Do you have recommendation on that, Julie, like, 'cause I think at one time, you know, we even talked, it could be a citywide sort of draw or something to that, so tell me kind of like your thoughts, and, and how do we get there?
Right. For the record, Julie Conway, CityGate Associates, again, the, the special district, and this is based on examples of districts that have been developed in the last two, three years, so this is not something new, this is something that has been done other places. If there is a, is a broader base for the district, then there would be more funding options because it serves a broader area, and it's inclusive of all the facilities and the landmass and the resources that would be included in that district. I will, without getting into it, I'm more than happy to come back to, to help provide more information to City Council on this and staff, and there is a group that is working on it in the community as well. I will share with you that both the citizen-based Washto County Parks and Open Space Commission have approved and recommended to the Washto County Board of Commissioners in May of this year to move forward on developing a service plan, which would outline what that would look like. The recommendation for a service plan is included in this master plan. In addition, your Recreation and Parks Commission have, has done the same thing, they have reviewed the service plan and the special district, and they have, in the last five months, recommended that a service plan be completed to look at, so there are two citizen groups within the community that have suggested that this move forward, so I'll leave it at that, but to answer your question, the broader, the better.
Awesome, great job. Okay, thanks, Julie, all right. Who would like to comment? Go ahead, Councilwoman Doer.
All right, let me just start, so well done, huge document, I love the fact that you met with the council, us two times, I think, once at the very beginning, but once more recently, and it seems that you've incorporated our thoughts, which I love, I mean, like, we matter too, right? I wanted to just point out that on your slide, I, they're not numbered, but it's Q4, pick your top three recreational facilities that are needed the most in City Reno, I just want to point out that nature trails was number one, and what did we just decide to do today was put fifty thousand dollars to planning a nature trail, and also, number three of these twenty-five is hiking and biking trails. Well, what do we say? We're gonna make it hiking, biking, adaptive riding, we didn't go into all this, but potentially horseback riding, potentially off-road vehicle, if there's room and if it's appropriate, but I wanted to say, and then on Q5, pick the three most important items to consider in the design of the Truckee River Corridor, you have river and water access, shade trees, shade structures, I mean, these are things we hear from our residents all the time, is making the existing parks, the eighty-seven, more accessible, more usable by larger types of people, wider array of people, not just kiddies on the playground, not just soccer, but also gathering spaces, picnic spaces, and also trailheads. And so, I just wanted to speak to the fact that the plan's incredibly well-done, I was able to read in-depth some sections, this funding source that the mayor brought up is incredibly critical, I'll come back to it in a minute, the question I wanted to ask was, in a section of your plan, you speak about the PUDs, and for me, this has been very frustrating, so in South Reno, we're full of PUDs, Plan Unit Developments, and historically, what's happened is that developers have not given over some good spaces for these parks, and in fact, they've wanted the City Council to pay for that space that they're making available, at an elevated price, that's based on the build-out with the homes, in other words, not, it's not open space, but it's an appraisal value based on houses and commercial development and so on. It sounds like in your plan, you were making some recommendations on how we should handle PUDs going forward, and I just wondered if you could illuminate those for us? This is a question. What are you suggesting we do? That might be different even from what we're doing. I see lots of gathering a paper, so I hope.
My file.
Okay.
Again, for the record, Julie Conway with CityGate Associates, and to distill this in the time allowed today, I'll give you a few ideas.
Yeah.
Number one, and, and this goes back really beyond working with PUDs, number one, the city needs to be more proactive on acquiring land from, I don't want to say before PUDs are developed, because that, that is difficult to do, but the, the city needs to hire a, a real estate professional and/or work with a nonprofit like Nevada Land Trust, who already have the formula, the algorithms, they know how to do this, they're doing it all over the community, and they're doing it for, for Washto County, work with them and say, we need a facility in this area, help us get one in this area, so that's, that's one strategy that, so.
Is proactive.
Very proactive, and, and Nathan and his group and your staff on, you will look at the map like we have provided and say, we need a facility in this region, this acres, this access, let's go get it, how do we do that? So, now, that's number one. Now to your question about the PUDs, we did a fairly extensive evaluation of about five or six PUDs that have been done over the last twenty years, the city has done, and the agreements are not consistent.
Right.
The, the park, the park agreements, so one of the recommendations, action step, is to, even to the point of, the city gave up its naming rights.
Yeah.
To the park in one of the agreements that we looked at, so maybe, you know, obviously that was okay, because that council agreed to do that, but that's something that you need to very carefully look at, is this what we want to do? Is this how we want to have our parks developed and managed? So, one of the, one of the things with the PUDs is to be more consistent on what the city wants, the acreage and location, because in many cases, this, and I won't highlight which properties, but the city has been given the remnant parcels.
Exactly.
That are worth very little, they're worth, they're worth nothing, if you will, they're leftovers that can't be developed, and, and we feel, as consultants, listening to the committee and the commission and the citizens, is that the city, the citizens deserve better.
We should have high-value parcels, not the remnant leftovers.
They deserve, exactly, they deserve the best parcels, and that means, in some cases, that the city may have to pay fair market value, highest and best use, which you know that term very well, highest and best use means that the developer can put XYZ units on it, and, and so you may have to pay fairly high, you cannot wait for the developer to give you these remnant parcels, so I want to stop there, but that, those are two examples of what the plan has indicated.
Well, I thought in your plan, thank you, I, we're out of time, so I just, I wanted to mention, I thought in your plan that you were recommending actual donations from the developers, that we set a recreation standard, an expectation, you're gonna have X amount of homes, there should be X amount of open space, and that's on you, just like it's on you to provide adequate roads, adequate water, adequate sewer, you need to be providing adequate outlets for your residents, so I'd love to see further conversation about this later, but I'm fully in support of this plan, so thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Ebert. I don't know if you wanted to speak.
Yeah, no, I did, no, and I just want to agree with Councilmember Doer's comments about, you know, requiring the developers to contribute some type of land for parks, in particular, my, my ward, and I know other wards have probably similar issues, but it's very apparent in my neighborhood right now that there's developments happening, but there's not parks going in, you know, along with these apartments and houses, and once this area is filled in, we're not gonna be able to put a park in, so even if we are paying market value for these parcels to put a park in, I think it should be something that we require as part of the approval process, that, that we catch up, especially, you know, looking at some of these numbers in this report regarding, you know, numbers of acreage that were short, and forgive me, this report is so thick, so give me one second to get to the right page here. Ward four, mini parks, we have zero acres, that's zero. And then, for neighborhood parks, Ward three has the least amount, but Ward two is right after them, with only fifty-three acres of, of neighborhood parks, so there's some, you know, glaring deficiencies, you know, that when you compare, especially ward by ward, and then also, you know, Ward two, community parks, zero, those numbers are awful, you know, especially considering we have development happening in every ward, there shouldn't be any area that has zero acreage of parks, that's crazy, so if that's something that we can incorporate as a requirement, some kind of contribution for parks, I would like to see that.
All right, Councilwoman Bruckus.
I'm just gonna go around.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I appreciate that. Congratulations to everyone who participated in this effort, and thank you, you know, whether it's the citizens who showed up in a meeting, or, you know, certainly our team, thank you, and, and good job to everyone who participated and made this a product here for us today, thank you for consideration and adoption and implementation.
Councilwoman Martinez.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, I also want to give some praise to certain community members, especially those that serve on our Recreation and Parks Commission, our Acting Chair, Carla Wordinghouse, Vice Chair, Michael Ginsburg, Craig Bronson, who we heard from earlier, Emily Landy, Mac Rossi, who also spoke, Cherry Waeger, and our late Chair of the Rec and Parks Commission, David Pritchett, who was key and instrumental in the work that we did here, I do appreciate all the efforts, not just from Stantec and our Rec and Parks Commission, but also from our comms team in the City of Reno for extending the invitation to community members to participate in the process and provide feedback, as we've heard and have seen in the recommendations, there are some deficiencies in strategies and gaps that we can take to try to increase the recreation and parks opportunities in different parts of our, our city, but I, I'm hopeful for this plan and happy to be a part of this process and support the 2023 Parks, Rec and Open Space Master Plan. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, great job, everyone, thank you very much. Nathan, I have a couple of quick questions for you, please. One of the recommendations, or the mayor talked about, the river in here and the, the prioritization of it with the community, we're also working on a river master plan, or a plan, maybe it's not a master plan, but I just want to make sure, and I've said this before, that we're working with those two plans to make sure that they can use whatever data they need to get out of here, and that they're working together in collaboration on that, and then my second question actually was, this is fantastic, but we have a couple of other individual park master plans that are going on right now, I think with maybe Barbara Bennett, the Whitewater Park, Paradise Park, some of those other things, so could you just briefly talk about how those efforts work with this bigger plan?
Sure, so, Nathan Elliott-Parksen, Recreation Director for the Record, first question, yes, they'll be accessible, and I was told that's not my choice, that we'll be, we'll be putting all that together, so there's a lot of great plans that we'll formulate to build the, the Truckee River Plan. As far as the kind of site-specific master plans, I kind of look at it as like, if we're building this sixteen, seventeen-floor building again, we're still gonna design each floor and lay it out a certain way, so those are kind of conceptual design processes to help the public imagine what a space could look like, and to get their feedback for individual spaces, so the pros plan, think of it as like the entire building, and then think of each of those master plans as kind of a, a floor-specific plan, so.
So, and those floor-specific plans are still gonna be compatible with what we're, what you're presenting?
Yes, yeah, it'll be a governing document for all of it.
Implementation process, almost.
Exactly.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for my part, yes, certainly want to add my thanks to the comprehensive plan, it's really incredible, it is, I think, a, a great starting point for us to go do some things, and ultimately, I think that's what everyone wants, no one wants to do a planning process like this, and it's been really an undertaking, if you just look at the depth, the historical background, the current state of the parks, the inventory, it really is a really unparalleled work product, quite frankly, so I thank everyone for participating, but it won't mean anything if we don't do something with it, and so that is really a call for those of us on the dais to do something with it, I think as a city, for me, my own personal goals and how I have always viewed the work that we do, is it first starts with public safety, second, the most priority thing for us as a council has been housing, and then the third thing really is parks and recreation, and now we have the opportunity and a guide map for doing it, we've just got to go do it, and I think also it's important that our public understand that everybody, we really talk a good game in Parks and Rec, we all, I think, want and appreciate more parks, how do we pay for it, right? That is the real question, because I think at the end of the day, everyone that you meet, when you're in conversation or at the coffee shop on the street or in a park, says, hey, we need more parks and recreation opportunities, we want to maintain the parks we have, it's important for so many variety of reasons, now how do we pay for it? So, those are the things that I really want to focus on, is what do we do to pay for it, and I have consistently said from the dais that there are opportunities to, obviously, first and foremost, bring the public into that conversation, so if the public, and I'll give you by way of example, I'll say, the WC1 money that goes into the school district is a really good example, this was a community-driven effort to go out and put on the ballot an initiative that resulted in what I think is historic and legacy improvements into our school system, right? I would like to see the same thing for the parks, our parks and recreation deserve equally to be at the pinnacle and height of, of what we can provide this community, I think people obviously are moving here because we live in a special place, and we want to make sure that that place has the kind of things that we want here, and recreation is consistently rated as the top, in the top three of those things, as I've mentioned, public safety, housing, and, and parks and recreation, so what I really want to see leadership is on how we're going to pay for it, right? And I think all of us at the dais know, because when we come to budget time, you know, we're stretching the blanket that's too small every which way we can, I, I certainly think your report points out, and I think rightfully so, that that will not occur just in the general fund opportunities that we have today, we have got to get outside of the belief that everything could be paid for. for out of the general fund in a particular calendar year. It just really can't. The historic investments we're so far behind on, we really have got to go out there. And so I'm open to the community's interest in this area. So if that's a bond question that goes on the ballot, I'm interested in that. If that's parks districts that we have to set up and vote on here on the council, I think each one of us will be, would be hard pressed to vote against something that is to improve the lives of our citizens in that way. And it would be an historic investment across every ward, really. And so, again, if that's requiring new funding sources is the absolute primary thing that we should take away from all this. Because the rest of it, I think, is all stuff that everyone agrees in good conscience, we need to do. More pools, more flat fields, more parks, more trails. Maintaining what we have obviously is important, too. But let us be honest with one another, that really it comes down to dollars, right? How do we prioritize the way in which we have to fund equitably the opportunities and the costs that are, you know, related to parks and recreation services? So I cannot wait for us to undertake this together. And I think that this body is up for the challenge.
All right, Councilwoman Doer.
Thank you. I, my second comment was exactly where Councilmember Reese went, which is that we must, in a very affirmative way, deal with the funding question. Some, I want to say 20 years ago or more, the county did their ballot initiative, I think it was a 65 million. In today's inflationary world, we would need a lot more than that. I think you've identified a pretty big number, just to get to parity. We tried a ballot initiative down to legislature, and we didn't get to a second hearing. I mean, the legislature didn't want us to just put it on the ballot. So it is, to my colleague's point, in my mind, going to take a citizen-driven ballot initiative similar to the Washoe County, I think it was Washoe County one, back 20-some years ago, to get the kind of funding we need. Let's find out. Do our residents, they all say it's their number one in the master plan 2017. They all say it's their number one right here. We were just identified as the number one happiest place to move, right, to be. Then we were just identified, Colin pointed out, that outdoor recreation hiking was our number one, again, from Outside Magazine. So, I mean, all of this means something. It's not coming from nothing. Our residents are speaking. We have to be responsive. On a ballot initiative, we cannot drive that effort. That has to be a citizen-driven effort. We can provide information, which we now have a plan, that could be appended to that kind of initiative. And even if we set up a district, I just don't think, I mean, it's like the fire district. We just need to adopt the whole city as the district, right? There's needs in every ward. So I too, I think the very next step should be very focused on this funding. And if we decide an outside ballot initiative is, well, all of you are with outside groups, and we heard from six outside groups on the trail today, Truckee Meadows Trails, et cetera. There's a, there's the soccer groups, there's the swimming groups. All of these are natural aggregations of interested people that want to see us do more. So I think it's time to call upon them to ask for their leadership. And now, this is just my opinion, but, you know, it is the one thing, biggest one thing standing in our way. We have to have staff to be able to support this. We have to have a parks planner. We have to have a trail planner. We have to have more maintenance people, because one of the complaints we get all the time, existing parks, we can't keep them clean. Can't change out the toilet paper. Can't keep the poop out of the park. Can't keep the trash out of the park. Can't keep the picnic tables clean. So we must address it. Like, we got to be real. And that's the cynicism a little bit, is, okay, we did a beautiful plan, and where it's going to be a very nice table ornament, right? Or onto the shelf. We don't want that. None of us here want that. So please help us.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think Councilwoman Doer is spot on, but you know what I do know for sure? All of you sitting here agree too, right? Because that's what, you know, we've been hearing your feedback and being the experts. Obviously, that's critical, but we cannot do it if we don't have that help. So we've got to do that. So just encouraging the council, I think all of us feel strongly about making sure that that happens. So that's good to have the support there. There's just two things, and I want to hurry up and take this vote, quite honestly. Just because it's an exciting time, and also, Nathan, I would be remiss if I didn't thank you and your passion for parks. I love your energy and enthusiasm. You're fairly new, but it's really, really welcoming. So thank you. Just two things I want to put on your radar. I don't want to have a long discussion about it, but one is pocket parks. You know, when you talk a little bit about, like, you know, not having the, you know, the bigger parks, but still in denser areas, the reason why I think that's important, because those denser areas might have those really funky, weird parcels that quite honestly can add a lot of value. And are, you know, can be put there or whatever, but I just think pocket parks are also really important, like we just did. And I would love to sort of expand on that with David Pritchard Pocket Park. You know, love that, those kinds of things, too. So as much as we love our big parks, too, let's think about the little parks, because sometimes in the dense areas, that's all we get. And the last but not least, I want to just throw on here is, let's see, the shared partnership. It's so important because the river runs right through it, and that's the county and with Sparks. And, you know, talking about that relationship, that, and we also have parks that are right next to them, like Paradise Park. So we have this shared relationship and responsibility. And, you know, as we move forward, really having them at the table, because, you know, I've been trying to do this River Ranger project for so long, and quite honestly, it's been a little challenging. And I think they want to be involved in the process and part of the process. It's just, you know, what does that look like? Maybe they dedicate, you know, staff to that, or, you know, make a commitment, resolution, that they want to be a part of this shared collaboration. So that's all, just, I just wanted to throw it out there. Because I know you guys know this. I'm speaking, I'm preaching to the choir. Anyway, anyone else want to put some last-minute things in before we take this vote?
Ever so briefly, Madam Mayor, if I might. I just want to say to the Parks Department and our employees, thank you. I don't think it is an easy job. At times, it feels like there's a lot of criticism leveled at our parks folks. It's really not directed at you, it's directed at us, because we know that you all are working with the resources we've given you. And so I know you're understaffed. I know that we don't have the resources needed to maintain existing facilities. And I just want our employees to understand and know that we are coming. We're working on a plan. Hang in there with us as we get there, because these are great people, top to bottom, doing such incredible things in so many ways. And it can be a hard and long-suffering place to be, especially when you don't have the financial support that we know that they lack, the full-time employees that the report points out we don't have. So kudos to our Parks team.
Okay, go ahead, Councilwoman Eber.
So looking at another page on this report, and there's some comparisons that I think are really useful. It's City of Reno, Boise, Idaho, Carson City, Fort Collins, Colorado. And it shows populations, acres per thousand residents. I think these numbers are really great to look at. And it also shows, you know, how their parks are funded. So Reno, unfortunately, has the lowest acres per thousand residents. We only have seven acres per thousand residents, the highest being 326 acres in Fort Collins. So 326 acres per resident. And the funding sources over here, you know, it explains how they're funded. So this is great information. I have a question, and maybe this is for staff. Have we tried any of these funding sources that these other cities have initiated? Just, you know, out of curiosity, it says, you know, sales tax increase, state lottery funds, voter-approved levels for capital acquisition, that are property tax-supported. Like, have we tried anything like that? Nathan, I know you're very new here, but just wanted to ask.
Sure. Well, yeah, Nathan Ollett, Parks and Recreation Director, for the record. Julie, we're fortunate to have Julie here, who would know many of those things. But I think that is the crux and the crucible of this document, is to bring the opportunities that are in the document forward to this body, to answer the hard questions. Do we want to do that? Is that right for Reno? So I'll let Julie talk about what we have tried.
Okay.
For the record, Julie Conway. The city has tried some of that in probably the last 20, probably 20 years. But even if they have, it's a new day. I mean, it's, it's a new day. We would recommend that you kind of wipe the slate clean and look at everything again. And that's, that's the point that this plan makes, is that you've got new community, you've got new citizens, there's a new future, and so everything should be on tap.
Yeah.
Including, back to your point of that chart, the impact fees, this plan recommends that you seriously look at impact fees, because residential construction tax is old history. It is not serving the need based on the 2017 council-adopted re-imagine Reno. That said, do look at it, and it hasn't been looked at. So impact fees in particular, to your point of that chart, those are used in other areas. They have not been used here in Reno for parks, and they should be looked at.
Okay. Another thing real quick is, the first thing that came to mind, and maybe a possible income stream, is maybe a marijuana tax? Has anybody tried that? Or is there any kind of reason why we shouldn't look into that? Or?
I don't know of any, I don't know of any funding source for parks and recreation in particular. It may be that it funds general fund, which then may support Parks and Rec. and agencies, but we did not evaluate that in this report.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, and in fairness with Eber, there are certain things that we have no control over. We can't, marijuana is a state-regulated entity, a Lotto, for example. We couldn't pass a Lotto, I don't think.
Yeah, but talking about like ballot initiatives, you know, things like that, obviously, like if it was a state-level thing that could get any kind of traction, because, you know...
Love your idea. It's a really good idea. We haven't had a lot of legislators who have before sat in local government. And so I think that having someone in local government experience, and then becoming an assembly member or a senator, would provide the path, right? Because a lot of people do not come from that background. So I think it's a really important part of how we approach the legislative process.
Yeah. And I know that marijuana is kind of a new thing in the country, too. So just kind of curious to see if anybody had tried that out yet. So thank you.
Good questions. Any other questions from the dais? Okay, I'm going to come to you, Councilmember Martinez, for a motion.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. Let me just pull up the recommended motion. I don't know if it can get put on the screen. Or I'll pull it up. It's loading right now.
No problem. The computer system's down. I think it's an approval of staff recommendation.
Okay, easy enough. I move to approve staff recommendation to adopt the 2023 Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Master Plan.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Martinez, a second by Ms. Dewar. Any additional questions at this time? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Yay.
Yeah, that is definitely a clap-worthy moment.
Yeah.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let us get resituated. I believe we're on Charlie one first as we come back. Let me say that we'll now open the public hearing, and let the record reflect that the city council is opening the public hearing on item Charlie one. Madam Clerk, was proper notice given? Any correspondence received?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Reese. Proper notice was given, and there was no correspondence received on this item. Additionally, we have not had any public comment registered.
Okay, thank you so much. And do any council members need to make disclosures at this time? Does anyone desire a staff presentation?
No.
Okay, so I'm going to come to you, Ms. Dewar, for a motion.
Yeah, I'd like to move that, oh.
We're on C one.
Yeah, we need to have the city attorney read the bill.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Hall or Mr. Shipman, I apologize, I overlooked the fact that we need to read the ordinance introduction.
That's great. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Ordinance introduction, Bill number 7250, case number ANX24-00001, Pembroke Drive annexation, ordinance annexing to and making part of the City of Reno certain specifically described territory of three parcels, being plus or minus 112.4 acres of property located north of Pembroke Drive, plus or minus 796 feet from its intersection with South McCarran Boulevard. The site is adjacent to the City of Reno jurisdictional boundary located within the sphere of influence, and has a master plan, licensed designation of quasi-public PQP. Upon annexation, the site will have the parks, greenways, and open space, PGOS zoning designation, together with other matters which pertain to or are necessarily connected therewith, Ward three.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hall, and I apologize for skipping you there. I'm going to come now to Ms. Dewar, who I think is ready for a motion.
All right, I, oh, you have a question.
Let's start there, then.
Yeah, for staff, thank you.
Mr. Williams, welcome.
This is Carter Williams, Assistant Planner, for the record.
Hi. Just a real question, or a quick question, since we're talking so much about parks. What was the process for this annexation? Just because I would like to know how we can annex parks into my ward. So what triggered this, and what was the process for this to happen?
Procedurally, so there's two types of annexations. This particular annexation is a case where the city owns the property, and it's contiguous to the boundary of the city.
Got it.
So that's a path forward. It's submitted to our department as an annexation request, and it comes before the city council. It's just planning commission, so.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Williams, thank you for the work that you've put into this, because I know from the original staff reports that you've done a fantastic job, and we really appreciate seeing you at the dais. So it's always a privilege. I'll come now to you, Ms. Dewar, for a motion.
Yeah, on C one, I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance to annex part of the City of Reno, the property that's laid out in the staff report, into the City of Reno in the amount of about 112 acres on Pembroke Drive, along Pembroke Drive.
And so to be clear, you're moving for referral?
Is that what we would say, referral? Okay, I'm moving for referral, to refer this ordinance for...
Second reading.
The second reading. Thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion by Ms. Dewar, a second by Mr. Martinez. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Ms. Breckus, the floor is yours.
Yeah, you know, this is an unusual annexation, because we're both the applicant and the one, the jurisdiction accepting it in. But I have a longstanding approach about how I view annexations, and I think it's consistent with the spirit of the regional planning environment which we work in. And that is that we adopt a program of annexation, so there's certainty out into the world of where the city corporate boundaries will move over time. And, you know, paramount, I think, is the city following by the best practices and rules. Now, had this come to the council as, you know, do you want to vote to, you know, apply for annexation, as, you know, I think has been done in the past, we could add that discussion then. But now we'll vote on it from the other side as the accepting body, and I don't accept it. I want a program of annexation. I think that's the best way to control and manage the regional forum, consistent with the spirit of the regional plan and our master plan. So I don't support this annexation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
All right, Vice Mayor, we're moving on to item D, as in David two.
Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item? I see Ms. Weisman is here for discussion, if we should need one.
We do not have any public comment registered, nor have we received any correspondence.
Okay, let me first ask, does the body desire a presentation on this item?
This is the item that was on our agenda last week.
Yes, that's true.
Yeah, I do. I have a number of questions I was going to ask last week.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Ms. Weisman. The floor is yours.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, good afternoon. Councilmembers, Vice Mayor Reese, councilmembers, and City Manager Thornley. For the record, Elaine Weisman, Housing and Neighborhood Development. What we are discussing today on this item is the potential approval by council for staff to negotiate a contract with the Community Foundation of Northern Nevada to establish and manage the city's affordable housing charitable donation fund. In 2020, council began conditioning projects to pay an affordable housing per-door fee. The intent was to create a fund for affordable housing while providing developers with a tax incentive. To date, five projects have been conditioned, and as you can see from this chart, they range in size as well as per-door amount. Ultimate build-out will depend on the market, and we can expect the timeframes of starting to receive some donations to be within the next 12 to 15 years. we can expect the timeframes of starting to receive some donations to be within the next twelve to fifteen months, with some of the projects being out as far as fifteen years. So with that being said, the twelve to fifteen months, we need to have a vehicle by which to receive these donations. And that's where the Community Foundation does come in. The Community Foundation is a not-for-profit organization with extensive experiencing manage, um, managing public-private um, partnership funds in our community. We've had a very strong relationship with the Community Foundation. Um, we've worked with them on land donations, other affordable housing projects such as the Village at Sage. And, um, they also work with Washoe County, and they manage their Affordable Housing Trust Fund. What's great about the Community Foundation is that we can structure the management of the funds to where the city controls fund management, activities, and the project funded. So this, um, slide just gives you an idea of what the city of Reno would maintain control of and what the Community Foundation would control. Also, what we're asking today is for some direction, um, by this council. Um, while staff is negotiating this contract, if that is what council approves today, um, we would recommend that, we would like to build in a dollar amount into the contract, um, into the language which would dictate kind of a threshold of when we would bring the fund back to council um, to discuss program development and delivery. So for example, council could say today, once we hit three million dollars in our affordable housing charitable donation fund, we would like it to come back to council so we can start talking about developing some programs. Um, some possible future funding focuses, and these are just a few. There really are so many different possibilities. We could do a competitive grant cycle where we could put an RFP out to the community um, for nonprofits to come forward with some affordable housing initiatives. We could do a direct investment on a particular affordable housing project. Um, we could even purchase or manage properties that would be held, um, affordable in perpetuity for homeownership, which is something that the city has not done before. So again, these are just a few examples, and the real beauty of council maintaining control of the program development is that by the time we start receiving these funds, and all of the funds are received, there is gonna be most likely very different challenges and a different circumstances in our community that, um, there, than there are at this point in time. So what we might be looking at now is going to be very different when we actually start having some money to spend on affordable housing. So again, today, we are solely looking for authority to negotiate a contract to establish and manage funds so we can start receiving funds in a tax deductible format, um, for the developers. And additionally, staff recommends that as part of this discussion, um, that we can involve a dollar amount to build into the contract as a threshold for when to bring funds back to council for program development. So with that, I am available for any questions. This is the recommended motion. I also have Eaton Dunkelberger. He is the CEO of the Community Foundation of Northern Nevada. He's here to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weisman. Appreciate your time. Ms. Breckus, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, thank you for the presentation. Could you put on the slide of the projects? You said something that really caught my, uh, attention, and that was that we set this up for tax deductions for these people. Um, how do you, where'd you get that? Cause I was through all, I participated in all those hearings, and I never remember that being, you know, about that. It was always a condition of approval. You're not gonna get your development approved unless you contribute this much money. There's never tax, uh, you, you know, it was never in that. I, where'd you get that? What, what, what did you base that on?
Um, so, uh, from what I understand, this was set up so that we could, we would require the developers to make a donation to the city that is also tax deductible. So just doing, and establishing a vehicle by which to do that. And so in return, we get a per door donation to go toward affordable housing that is also tax deductible for the developer.
Interesting. Making someone make a donation. I mean, I, I, you know, through the development process, and I objected to it at the time, cause how can that be a tax deduction? It's just, it seemed to me like another cost or fee that the city was requiring. That's how I see it. So, you know, I guess the thought is if you're parked in the Community Foundation, then it's a philanthropic environment.
Sounds like Ms. Foose has an answer.
Right. Angela Foose, um, Assistant Director with Development Services. I think maybe we should clarify the specific language of those conditions. We have specifically required a donation. So, the conditions are written to be that this will be a donation.
Yeah. Donations, you know, maybe it's a terminology, but donations don't always seem like requirements. Requirements are, uh, not, you know, philanthropic efforts. I, I don't know, it just, I objected to it at the time. I object to it now. I'm concerned, you know, some of these companies, I don't know, are gonna be publicly traded, like a Santera, Toll Brothers, you know, or something like that. So, I'm sure they have accountants who can help them figure it out. The next question I have is, we haven't taken in any of the four million yet. Is that correct?
That is correct.
No, I, okay. I was at each of these, and recall a lot of dialogue about how we were gonna set up the parameters and program, and maybe even link them to the actual project. So, y- you know, uh, within Talis Daybreak of these four thousand units, somehow there'd be some benefit to people, you know, very specific in that community. And I guess what, I'm troubled right, right now with this item. It seems like it skipped a step of rather outlining the program of how we're gonna do it, which is what, you know, we said. Um, and it would be helpful going forward. Let's do that work first, and then do this connection over with the Community Foundation, so that it's very clear to everyone how we're gonna use the money. So I have a hard time stepping over to the Community Foundation to take this money. Don't see a lot of need, cause none has come in yet, and want to really flesh out the program, certainly for these five, but maybe even going forward. That's the work we always said we were gonna do. And, um, so anyway, that's, that's the problem I'm having with this item.
No problem. Any other questions from the dais? Ms. Dewar?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I have a few questions, and in my briefing, I brought them up. And one of the points I wanna get clarification on is, is my understanding, and we went through this with relief Reno, that a quote, donation to the city is, um, uh, considered charitable, or you can get a tax donation, uh, tax write-off for that. So that's how it's been with relief Reno. Um, my understanding is, um, any contribution to government is considered a tax-free donation. So, I am unclear why we have to work with the Community Foundation. Is it just that we don't have the staff here maybe to manage the money or manage the program? Is that?
I just, I'll refer, um, to the attorneys on that question.
Um, which question? I'm sorry.
I'm not sure it was a legal question, though. I, I, Mr. Manager.
I'm just saying, it's my understanding.
I think I can
Yeah, please.
Provide some clarity. So, in general, charitable contributions to government entities are tax deductible
Yes.
under provision of the United States Tax Code.
Correct.
That said, as Ms. Breckus correctly points out, most of the entities that are making these donations, not in, perhaps in the relief Reno context, but in this context, have accountants, have lawyers, and just because we say such a thing is deductible does not make it so. So they will sort that out on their end. In this case, the mechanism by which this exaction was drawn up, it may fit into that box.
Yeah.
It is not the point of the exaction, right? The point is not to create
Charitable.
A, a, a tax deduction opportunity, uh, for these entities.
Right.
What we're talking about today is, as this money comes in,
Yeah.
we think that it is probably best that the program be administered by the Community Foundation.
So here's my point too, and I brought this up in my briefing. Many times when I see nonprofits do programs in conjunction with government agencies, um, it's the non, and with all due respect, it's the nonprofit who, um, is credited with doing the work. And, um, I've seen it over and over in forty years in government. An example would be, and I love them to death, Nature Conservancy, but I myself at Flood Project work with Nature Conservancy to do restoration projects, thirty million dollars worth. Flood Project never mentioned, ever. Nature Conservancy mentioned every opportunity. So what I wanna make sure is that the, there's a recognition of where this money's coming from, and the decisions that this board and council are making to further affordable housing. I have no problem working in partnership. I love it. I love partnerships. It's just that all of the ones I've seen are never equal. The city government, we're not very good at, uh, you know, talking about the good works that we do. But nonprofits, that's how, they are wired that way, and that's what they do. So just if you can take my thoughts into consideration, and make sure that, you know, this was something, a hard decision that the city council enacted to require these contributions in order for that development to move forward, that should not be lost. And then the program of projects that we decide on, it needs to be known that this is the ownership here at the city council and the city staff. So I love, again, the partnership and the collaboration on managing the money, but I don't wanna lose sight of that. So if you can commit to me, and, and also the Community Foundation can commit, that, that we'll keep that in mind whenever we're um, messaging about it, marketing about it, that we understand it, and we acknowledge the source of the funds. That's just one of my biggest concerns. Okay?
Thank you, Councilmember Dewar. For my part, uh, I'll sort of say a couple of things. Number one, uh, the Community Foundation of Northern Nevada is an absolute blessing to this region. I, I don't know of any other group in this region that has done or committed more in terms of the time, talent, energy, and resources to really taking all sorts of money into one place and then making it go back out into, for the benefit of this community. So, uh, they are really the, the gold standard. And, and my experience tells me that they will make appropriate recommendations when it happens. I, I'll give, for example, the, uh, Sage Street dormitories, uh, which was a project that was jointly undertaken by a lot of folks, and, uh, certainly, uh, we were there, I think, as the city, and, uh, rightfully recognized as a partner in that effort. Um, and so for my part, um, I know that we made some hard choices on projects. Uh, sometimes government is choosing between, you know, two not very great options, but the, the option we chose, now having made them, I, I don't need another pat on the back. For me, I, it's just not my nature. I'm happy to know that we share the good work that we do every day with people who, in this circumstance, would find, I think, housing opportunities. I wanted to ask a very specific question about the chart, Ms. Weisman, where you've, and this may actually not be directed at you, it may be better for Ms. Foose. Um, and the reason why is because you've identified number of units. And one of the things I think, um, is likely to be true, for example, in the Talis Valley PUD, it says number of units, three nine nine five. But having, uh, followed that project very closely since it was approved, I think they're probably gonna end up somewhere around thirty-two hundred units. Right? So you have a project that started out as a right, was entitled to be five thousand plus units, and now it's down to around thirty-two hundred, I think. Um, is there, obviously, the per door amount cannot change, but that fee contribution will be lessened, which means the number down below would be less too. So maybe, maybe it is a question for Ms. Foose, and welcome back to the podium. It's like a jack in the box. You just, you never know who's gonna ask you a question.
Yes, I think, uh, to answer your question, some of these projects have a much longer timeframe. For instance, Canyon's PUD is ninety-one units. That's not gonna go out fifteen years. But Talis, thirty-nine hundred units, that will go out a number of years. And so as their project changes, their PUD morphs into different things, they'll come back for amendments, that number of units could change.
Well, I almost think that's one of the beauties of having the Community Foundation involved, because we don't know when the money's gonna come in.
Right.
And so knowing that it will go someplace and live until we, I think, will have a role, as I understood it from my briefings, in how those funds are then put out into the universe. But again, like I said, I, I wanna make sure people do understand that these number of units were not a guarantee. Like, it wasn't an agreement that they guaranteed that they would put that certain dollar amount. It's based on the actual number of units that are built.
Correct.
And so in that case, it would be, you know, uh, almost, uh, eight, eight hundred units less than what is identified here. Um, okay, uh, that, I appreciate that explanation. Any other questions from the body at this time?
Yeah, and I'm sorry if it might have come across. I love the Community Foundation. I've given money to them myself. I have set up, uh, you know, uh, little, uh, separate funds myself.
Yeah.
So I completely believe in their mission, and not only done the Community Foundation here, but in other states too, where they have a community foundation, other towns. So it's not about that. I love having you as a partner. Um, you mentioned the Sage Street. We contributed almost this amount of money, three million dollars of land. And, you know, it, it wasn't, I, I don't think fully explained as a true partnership. That's all I'm looking for. Thank you.
No, appreciate your comments. Any other questions? Mr. Martinez?
Thanks so much. Um, I think in order to, you know, get my mind around, sort of provide direction about when the mark is to bring the money back, if you can maybe give us an understanding of what an impactful amount would be for any one of these areas that you've identified. So maybe the competitive grant cycle, how much an impactful amount that would be. Um, and then how much it was maybe for the Community Land Trust that was established in Golden Valley, and what it took to do a project like that as well.
So, stat, uh, Monica and I, and she can probably come up here and answer this a little bit better. Um, just when we had discussions about what we think would be a good threshold amount, we thought around three million dollars would be a good amount, um, to bring back to council. We're looking at, you know, up to four point two, and as, um, Vice Mayor Reese mentioned, that amount will likely go down just a little bit, but something that, that can be impactful and really make a difference would be around three million dollars. And as to the, um, Golden Valley project, Monica.
Can you repeat the question again for the Golden Valley project? Monica Kirch for the record, by the way.
Thank you.
I didn't hear that part of the question.
Yeah, I was just curious how much of an allocation it was to get that project, um, up and going.
That was a land donation for the Golden Valley Homes. Is that the project you're referring to?
Yeah, across the street from North Valleys High School, right? Is that?
That's, there was a land donation.
So there was no allocation from the city of Reno? It was just a land?
Just land donation, yeah.
Okay, so yeah, that just helps me understand sort of where we're at in that process.
Mr. Martinez, you raise a good point. Perhaps the issue there is that the land is in the trust. It was intended to be a shared equity community, which would have been the first of its kind in the state of Nevada, and it really hasn't gotten where we had hoped it would, because the, the costs for, uh, materials, lumber, labor, all those things have happened. So I could see a path forward where these dollars would go to close the gap to make that project a reality. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Um, I, I wish that, uh, I knew, um, uh, less than I do know about it, because then we'd probably know that it was built, but it hasn't been built. And we have not been able to close the funding gap to get there, but perhaps over the coming years, we will be able to.
And we are looking, um, currently with that project on some alternatives to get that through the finish line. I actually have the agreement open on my computer screen at this very moment.
Fantastic. Ms. Kirch, always you're looking.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments at this time? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, or Ms. Dewar, can I get a motion?
Yeah, sure. I'd love to give a motion, um, to, um, let me just make sure I have this. To approve staff to negotiate a contract with the Community Foundation Northern Nevada to mess it, to manage the city of Reno's Affordable Housing Charitable Donation Fund.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Dewar. I'll second. Any additional questions at this time? Ms. Breckus, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I am not gonna support, you know, I think the Community Foundation, you know, I applaud them for stepping up, but I think the good thing is, the better approach would be for the council to look at those different projects and identify parameters of how that money's gonna be used, so then those who start paying know what the plan is for their money. What's gonna happen? You know, let's just say, is Mr. Stan Lucas's project comes in, he sells it to someone else, their accountants come in, how's this money using? And what, you know, what, what's this for? Why do we have to give a contribution and get, you know, accounting involved? Is, well, here's the city council resolution. It's an addendum to the condition, the approval, and, uh, that's what is gonna happen. Or maybe Mr. Lucas just won't sell, and he'll continue to sue and sue us, you know, again, and, and challenge this money. So this is a real opportunity for the council to take each of those projects, outline how that money's gonna be used, create a tight connection between those projects and the use of the money, and then, going forward, set up a program. That's what needs to happen, in my view, and that's why. to happen, in my view, and that's why this vote is not one I'm going to support at this time. Thank you.
Okay, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Madam Clerk, item G1, good one?
That is, that is correct. We're moving on to item G1, which is the annual election of vice mayor.
Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not have any registered, nor have we received any correspondence.
Okay, it would be my honor to nominate Naomi Dewar as the vice mayor for the city of Reno.
Thank you.
I have a motion that I have made and has been circulated by Councilmember Martinez. Any comments from the body?
You know, I would like to support Ms. Dewar, but we are going into the 2024 election cycle, and there's so much confusion out there about what ward someone is in. You know, am I in Ward 1? Am I in Ward 2? I can't even make, on the agenda, I go to see, you know, what ward is this person? Where are they? And the way the wards were done through redistricting was so disturbing to me, and she was the architect of it in many ways, in my view. And for that reason, I can't support her in this important year as there's confusion, as we vote in and transition in, to be the person who's here when our mayor's not here. So for those reasons, I'm not supporting Ms. Dewar and this elevation of her at this time. Thank you.
For my part, I will say that being the vice mayor has, and I've done it now twice, it is really the honor of a lifetime to do it, and I've been very fortunate to do it. It is a thankless and difficult job, but there is no one that I would trust more with this opportunity and this responsibility than Ms. Dewar, and that's why I made the motion. So I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
I have comments, too.
Okay, Ms. Ebert, just let me know. You can put up the thing up here like that, or you can...
I mean, we haven't done this all day, so let me know.
You can do that, or you can signal to me.
Okay.
But the floor is yours.
Okay. I also take issue with having, you know, somebody that's up for election, no offense to anybody, but we have four people in the council that are up for election, you know. I know it's just Jenny and I that are not up for election, but I do take issue with somebody that's up for election being the vice mayor.
And the mayor.
Well, the mayor can't be the vice mayor, I would presume. Yeah.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Any additional comments? Okay, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Dewar.
Thank you. I'm honored, as you said.
You'll have to ride through the rest of the meeting, Madam Clerk?
No, this will take effect after this meeting.
No worries. I didn't want to put you on the spot, but we'll start with item G2 is next. G2 is the next item. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not have any public comment registered, nor have we received any correspondence.
Okay, and this is appointments to the Civil Service Commission, and so, Ms. Ebert, I believe that's your appointment process.
Sorry, Vice Mayor Reese. So this is actually an appointment from the mayor, and since she is not present, we're going to have to continue item G2 to the next meeting.
Okay, understand. I wasn't aware that that was the case. We'll come back to that the next meeting, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. So we're moving on to item G3, which is an appointment to the Human Rights Commission. There are potential appointments from Ward 4, Ward 5, and the at-large position.
Okay, can we start with Ward 4, just in order? Ms. Ebert, do you have an appointment from this list that you would like to make?
Sorry, what item was that again?
This is G3.
G3. Yes, I do, I do have somebody.
Or the R HRC.
Yeah. I would like to appoint Katie Calling.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Ebert, second by Ms. Dewar, as to Ms. Calling. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I'm sorry, forgive me. Am I appointing up to three at this time?
No, it's one.
Okay, okay.
Yep. So now we're going to come to Ward 5. Ms. Taylor, that is your ward and your appointment.
Thank you. I'd like to appoint Deborah Whitlock-Lax, please.
Okay, P Debs it is. I'll second that. Any additional questions or comments on that one? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. As for my appointment to the Reno Human Rights Commission, I will appoint Hagan Sannival, which I actually think might be a reappointment.
That's what I thought.
And so, that's my nomination. I need a second. I have a second by Mr. Martinez. Any additional questions or comments at this time? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, item G4 was previously pulled. Item G5 then is appointments to the U City Council. Madam Clerk, do we have public comment on this item?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We do not have any public comment registered, nor have we received any correspondence.
Okay, I'll come to you then. Mr. Martinez, do you have some nominations here?
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Mayor for the day. I am excited to get the U City Council appointment recommendations in front of you all today, and we're looking forward to appointing some of these members. So just going down the list, we're going to go ahead and recommend Avalon Campos, Nathan Gonzalez, Max Grinstein, Ira Hart, Daisy Miller, Egan Ram, Alex Stroop, and Maya Zankowski for the U City Council.
Okay, Madam Clerk, did you get all of that?
I did, thank you.
Okay, I'll second all of those. Any additional discussion or questions at this time? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item H1, City Council Comments.
Okay, let's start with Ward 1. Any announcements regarding city boards and commissions? None from Ward 1. Ms. Dewar?
None.
Okay, Mr. Martinez?
Nothing from me.
Ms. Ebert?
No.
Okay, Ms. Taylor? And I have none. So that closes item H1.
Moving on to our J item, closing public comment. We do not have any registered at this time. However, for the record, I would like to note that we did receive comments either after 4:00 PM yesterday or during this meeting, and there was one letter which was distributed to the Reno City Council in support of a various item. And with that, we are looking for a motion to adjourn on item K.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Martinez, a second by Ms. Taylor. Any additional questions at this time? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.